Hi, I'm Jeremy Crosby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're your hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every weekday, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can find all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues affecting you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
... 2025. The first thing is to call to the order to the meeting. And second, please stand up for the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Ratafratta.
Here.
Alder Dancer Jr. is absent. Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jetser.
Here.
Alder Latice.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Regstead.
Here.
Alder Vafadari.
Here.
You do have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So moving to item four, we have a couple of mayor proclamations. We are gonna do one at a time, and then we're gonna take the picture at the end. And then we have two public hearings. So we are gonna start with the first proclamation.
Nicole.
Proclaiming September 29 through October 5, 2025, as a week without driving. Whereas mobility is a fundamental part of life for Pittsburgh residents, connecting them to the community, allowing them to visit friends and family, and helping them to reach places of employment, education, medical services, shopping, recreation, and more, and...
Whereas the U.S. Bureau of Transportation Statistics has estimated the average cost of owning and operating an automobile in 2024 to be $12,296, and shows that this cost has steadily increased since 2017, and...
Whereas the Wisconsin Department of Transportation estimates that more than 40% of Pittsburgh residents do not drive, 30% of residents 16 years of age or older, due to age, financial circumstance, physical or intellectual disability, or a preference to minimize their environmental impact, alleviate traffic congestion, and prioritize the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists, and...
Whereas our society's decades-long reliance on cars has prioritized the construction and maintenance of streets with comparatively little financial investment made in improving sidewalks, multipurpose paths and trails, and public transit, resulting in Pittsburgh's walk, bike, and transit scores of 30, 58, and 20 out of 100, and bicycle network analysis score of 47 out of 100, and...
Whereas Pittsburgh Comprehensive Plan calls for the city to, one, develop and maintain a multimodal transportation system that reduces automobile dependency and increases transportation choices; two, establish and follow a complete streets policy that is equally sensitive to the needs of motorists, pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit users; and three, encourage participation in car-free challenges as a way to promote the many health, financial, and environmental benefits of active transportation, and...
Whereas Pittsburgh is taking meaningful steps to implement these policies by investing in public transit, introducing and expanding B-cycle throughout the city, adding to our network of multi-use paths and bike lanes, collaborating with neighborhood municipalities on a Safe Streets for All Planning and Demonstration Grant, and a Pursuing Vision Zero, and...
Whereas Week Without Driving is a nationwide initiative that aims to raise awareness and promote understanding about the challenges faced by individuals who do not have reliable transportation, highlighting the impact of limited transportation on people's ability to work, access to education, childcare, and retail, visit doctors, attend appointments, and enjoy recreational activities and entertainment.
Now therefore, it is resolved that I, Julio Ratafratta, Mayor, along with the Pittsburgh Common Council members, do hereby proclaim the week of September 29 to October 5, 2025, as a week without driving in Pittsburgh, and encourage all elected official, city staff, and Pittsburgh drivers to experience a full week without driving. We will try. This is proclaimed September 23, 2025. So, okay, so we are gonna continue with the proclamation, and then we're gonna take with it a picture. Okay, next one.
Celebrating September 15 to October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationwide from September 15 to October 15, honoring the rich culture, history, and contributions of Hispanic and Latino communities, and...
Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month begins on September 15 in honor of the Independence Day of six Latin American countries, including Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, and Mexico, and...
Whereas during this month, it is important to recognize the unique challenges that Hispanic communities continue to face and to renew our commitment to creating a more inclusive and equitable society for all, and...
Whereas Latinos participate politically in government at all levels, from school boards to the governor's office, from city councils and mayors to congress, and...
Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is one of enormous pride for over 68 million Hispanics and Latinos living in the United States, comprising 20% of the population and making it the nation's largest racial or ethnic minority, and...
Whereas the U.S. Census Bureau estimates that by 2060, Latino people will represent over 28% of the total U.S. population, with 110, 111 million residing in the United States, and...
Whereas Latinos are the fastest-growing constituency in Wisconsin, with more than 457,000 Latinos calling Wisconsin their state and home, representing 8% of Wisconsin's population, and...
Whereas despite challenges, setbacks, and targeted efforts by the federal government, the community continues to rise, adapt, and move forward with resilience. Their strength is in their diversity, their unity, and their unbreakable spirit, and...
Whereas Pittsburgh is fortunate to have a dynamic Hispanic-Latino community comprising 16% of its population that plays a vital role in our city's economy and society. Therefore, the city recognizes and celebrates the many contributions made by the Hispanic community to enhancing the quality of life in our city.
So now therefore, it is resolved that the mayor and common council recognize September 15 through October 15, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Pittsburgh, and congratulate our Latinx community on this significant month and thank them for their contribution to the vibrancy of the city of Pittsburgh. I'm gonna repeat this in Spanish. Por lo tanto, se resuelve que la alcaldesa y el consejo deliberante de Pittsburgh reconocen que el 15 de septiembre, el 15 de octubre, como el mes de la herencia hispana en la ciudad de Pittsburgh, y felicitan a la comunidad latina en este mes tan significativo y le agradecen por sus contribuciones a la vitalidad de la ciudad de Pittsburgh. Esto es proclamado el 23 de septiembre del 2025. Before we move to the next one, I wanna call to the microphone Professor Ibarra. He lives in Pittsburgh, and he is gonna say something about why it's so important this month for the Latino community.
Buenas tardes. Good evening. And thank you to you all, to this body, and to the mayor for the invitation to come and just share a couple of words of why this proclamation is of special importance to myself, my family, and our community here in Pittsburgh. I am a Mexican-American. My wife is a Mexican-American. My children are Mexican-Americans born here in Dane County. So when we moved here 15 years ago, we are children, we had four children that were born right here in Dane County at Mariter Hospital. In just these 15 years that we've lived in Wisconsin, we've seen a tremendous growth of the Latinx, Latina, Latino, Latina, Hispanic population, or whatever we choose to call ourselves, here, not just in this particular area, but across the state. As was noted, 17% of the Pittsburgh population is Latino, Latina, Latinx, Latina. 17% of this population is mostly younger people, which is around 25 years of age. Of this population, the majority, the majority of Latinos are U.S. citizens born here in Wisconsin. So not only is this community not foreign anymore, it's not from outside of our boundaries, but it's U.S. citizens born here in Wisconsin of Latino heritage. I think this is a narrative that is often lost in our conversations about Latinos, and it's a narrative that needs to be brought up over and over again. We picked Wisconsin because of its rich tradition of accepting immigrants over its last 200 years. People from Germany, people from Poland, people from Italy, people that migrated from labor from Puerto Rico, and people that came here of Mexican descent over 100 years ago have been integrated into the fabric of Wisconsin. And Wisconsin is as much impacted by this demographic transformation that we're undergoing as any other state in the nation. And again, I just want to say how proud I am of this resolution, of this council, and of the mayor, and I am certainly proud to be a resident of Pittsburgh, Wisconsin. We chose this city for what it has, and we plan to be here a long, long time. Muchísimas gracias.
Gracias, Armando. Okay, so next, we move to the next proclamation. You're gonna speak after we finish with the proclamation and the public hearing? Yeah. Yeah, you can, yeah, after that, yeah. We have another one, David. Okay.
Recognizing October 2025 as Fire Prevention Month. Whereas the city of Pittsburgh, Wisconsin, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Pittsburgh, and...
Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at the greatest risk of fire, and...
Whereas working smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of a fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and...
Whereas working smoke alarms reduce the risk of dying in a fire by more than half, and...
Whereas Pittsburgh residents should be sure everyone in the home knows the sound of smoke alarms and knows how to respond when they sound, and...
Whereas Pittsburgh residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory and physical disabilities, and...
Whereas Pittsburgh residents may request smoke detectors free of charge from the Pittsburgh Fire Department, as well as the American Red Cross, and...
Whereas Pittsburgh residents may request smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detector in-home evaluations from the Pittsburgh Fire Department, and...
Whereas Pittsburgh residents are welcome to attend the Pittsburgh Fire Department Open House being held on October 4 at Pittsburgh Fire Station #2, 2931 Marketplace Drive, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and...
Whereas Pittsburgh residents are responsive to the public education and fire prevention efforts of the Pittsburgh Fire Department and can take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and...
Whereas each year, the month of October is dedicated to raising awareness of the risk associated with fires and carbon monoxide poisoning, and the specific efforts to prevent those events from occurring through education and prevention efforts.
Therefore, I, Julio Ratafratta, Mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, along with the common council, do hereby proclaim the month of October as a fire prevention month throughout the city. And I urge all people in Pittsburgh to practice fire safety daily and to support the many public safety activities and effort of the Pittsburgh Police, EMS, and fire personnel. This is proclaimed September 23, 2025. Okay, so now we are gonna go and take the picture. Let me have the solutions. Okay, so this one is, okay. One second. Okay, and then where we are. I'm gonna do this first. So then I have a resident for non-agenda item, Debbie Haid. Please come to the microphone. You have three minutes.
David Haid, 5855 Woodford Road, and I'm speaking about the ordinance 2025-017. So 2025-017 enacts a significant change in the zoning across the city of Pittsburgh. So let's assume for a moment that the common council acts as the purveyor of the power that's delegated to it by the Wisconsin Legislature. And what would the Wisconsin Legislature do when presented with an ordinance such as this that is including pervasive changes of zoning across the city, knowing that there's lots of changes that are being proposed with respect to the regulation of construction, includes comprehensive plan zoning, and other issues? Well, the first thing it would likely do is it would take that proposed ordinance, including all the amendments to the zoning, under consideration at one of its working meetings, where it would discuss and have presented to it information with regards to what the purpose was, what the thinking was, what the rationale behind it, the research, et cetera. Then it would likely parcel that out to a subcommittee for more hearings where there would be a public pronouncement that there's this very large rezone going to happen in conjunction with comprehensive planning, et cetera, other things, very publicly make the community aware that these were going to be discussed at a hearing, not a public hearing in a formal sense, but at a working hearing of the common council. That's how legislators work. That's how legislatures legislate. And then, only then, after the council has been satisfied by the decision of the council itself, would it be voted to be placed on the agenda of the common council. So what did happen? Well, it got placed on the consent agenda by the powers that have the authority over your agenda. It got parceled out to the committees. And when it came to you, this very large, very substantive change in zoning, which has pervasive impacts across the city, was lightly debated, there was no one in the audience, and you adopted an ordinance that hadn't been seen before because it included changes from other places. Now, the way that the law is written, the law says the council must refer to the Plan Commission, the ordinance that will be adopted. That was never done. You adopted an ordinance into law that had never been referred to the Plan Commission for its review and comment to you. So not only was the trust of the community and your duty to the community at large violated, but you violated the letter of the law because you didn't take the time to act in the manner with which to wield the awesome power of the state legislature over the people who live in this community. You have the power to take their money, you have the power to do things that control their quality of life. Something has to be done. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. You can stay there because you want to speak on the public hearing? So stay there, so, okay?
Sure. Can I get my water, please?
Yeah. Okay. So I wanna make a clarification that the ordinance was referred out to Plan Commission, to SIDA, to Resource Conservation Committee, and the Housing Advisory Committee. So they were referred to four committees before it came to council. Okay, I will open the public hearing and ordinance 2025-011 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR 02-25, adopting the Greenfield Neighborhood Plan as an amendment to the Appendix A of the City of Pittsburgh Comprehensive Plan. So we have a couple of people that they want to speak on this matter, and I will call first Debbie Haid. Here is. Okay, go ahead, David.
So this is a double dip. I get to speak at this part and then at item four, adopting this? Is that true? Or is this it? So do I get to speak on the Greenfield Plan again at the adoption of the Greenfield Plan agenda item? Or is this the only three minutes I get?
This is a public hearing, so...
I understand, but do I get another shot at speaking at, so I do not?
No, that one is, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to clarify that, so I didn't make a mistake. Okay, so, so I want to talk about how we got here. Okay, so back in the dawn of time, in 1928, Herbert Hoover's Department of Commerce created a Standard City Planning Zoning Enabling Act. Wisconsin adopted that act pretty much verbatim in 1941, from '41 till '99. That was the law of the land. The law of the land said council has nothing to do with a master plan. A master plan is a type of comprehensive plan, but the comprehensive zoning ordinance also was a type of comprehensive plan. So in 1999, when the Smart Growth Law went in, it was clarified that the only thing that counts for a comprehensive plan in 62, 23, 7D2 that says you must only adopt a comprehensive zoning plan in accordance with a comprehensive plan. The only thing that counted now was the master plan. So a master plan is a type of comprehensive plan. Okay, so what you can do here tonight is simply stamp the master plan as amended and recommended to you by the Plan Commission with the legal standing of a comprehensive plan. That's what you're doing here tonight. Okay, so in 1999, so here's the longstanding 6223. Here's the additional clarifications and modifications to planning in Wisconsin that made it much more rigorous, that took out all the discretion within the city in order to do things. That was its purpose, to make it mandatory and make the master plan the only thing that satisfied the requirement to enact a comprehensive zoning ordinance. Here's what it says in one of the elements of 6611. "The implementation element of a comprehensive plan for Wisconsin City shall include a process for updating the comprehensive plan for that Wisconsin city." The city of Pittsburgh took that sentence with all the information for all 100 years and said that sentence, which simply says, "When you send out a comprehensive plan, you better include the process by which the comprehensive plan is amended according to the law," and said, "Oh, that's a get-out-of-jail-free card. It says we get to make up our own rules." And the rules we're gonna make up is we're gonna only have all there's to mayor and the plant staff be able to recommend amendments to the comprehensive plan. That's gonna say, neighborhood plans, there are no rules. We can do whatever we want. So who decided that it was time to take these neighborhoods out of the foodlot? I don't know. I didn't see anything that... It's a process. This is an administrative process. Who decided to initiate the planning for it based on what information? I don't know. I didn't see it. It's not in the record. Who decided that we should take away the responsibility of the Plan Commission to make and adopt a master plan for the city? I don't know. I didn't see it.
Your time is up. Thank you. I am calling back to Mark Jones and then Patrick Chaney.
Thank you very much. My name is Mark Jones, 2266 Alsine Road, City of Pittsburgh. I'm one of the endangered species in the city of Pittsburgh. I'm a Pittsburgh farmer. There aren't very many of us. I do not support the Greenfield Plan as it is created. There are three, there are large undeveloped areas in the north part of our city that already has sewer and water, good roads, and bus service. You folks have or will soon be approving somewhere between 900 and 1,000 living units in that area with the Bowman Plaza, one in District 1, and the complex on Lacy and Seminole Highway. Those are developing in the area that where we already have the sewer and water. And we can develop those areas without urban sprawl. And although the planning department disagrees with me, when you take agricultural area and you develop it, that is urban sprawl. We spent a lot of money developing a plan that no one from our area can support. I'm one of the four large landowners who were not interested in seeing the Greenfield area developed. And before we started this plan and spent between $150,000 and $200,000, those landowners were not spoken to to see if there was any interest in developing. There was no conversation from the city staff to those people. Should have been, but there was not. Could have saved the city quite a bit of money. Maybe down the road, that plan could have been created. But that was not done. That was a step that was not taken. We could do well to redevelop the areas in the northern part of our city and see that develop first and do it well. And for the most part, the city has done some fairly good development in the urban service areas. But don't push the farmers out. We have, we're lucky enough to be one of the few cities in the state of Wisconsin that has agriculture in it. And historically, we as a city have been very proud of that. When we became from a township to a city, I was one of the two people left who are, I'm still involved in the city. There's only two of us left alive that were part of that group that created this city. Don't kick the farmers out. It's just, and don't treat them rudely. They feed you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Patrick?
I'm representing Amy Steger, who sent this email to you but cannot attend. This is Amy's speech in Amy's words for the video record. "The greatest threat to our democracy is silence. Over the past two years, I've watched the city, the mayor, the alders, and planning staff hold listening sessions and public hearings for the Greenfield Neighborhood Plan. And while I appreciate those efforts, I need to be honest. Communication has still fallen short. Many residents, especially those not actively following this process, don't understand what the plan means. They don't realize the financial burden it would place on them, and I believe that's by design. A lack of clarity makes it easier to push plans forward with less resistance. Here's the reality. The Greenfield Plan will force about 50 residents to connect to city water and/or wastewater..." city water and/or wastewater at a cost of tens of thousands of dollars and, in some cases, over six figures per household. That's not a minor inconvenience; it's a potential financial crisis. In July, I took on a second job to begin saving for these costs. And when I told a coworker there, who happens to live a couple of doors down from me on Irish Lane, about the required hookups, she was shocked. She had no idea. Her response: 'We're unwell and septic. They can't do that.' That moment showed me just how poorly informed many residents are and how critical transparency is. If people don't know what's coming, they can't prepare and they can't speak up. I understand you're all planning with a future in mind, but many of you won't be sitting on this council when these changes are implemented. You may not be the leader who must answer to families who can't afford the cost when it comes. This plan, in its current form, will financially devastate many of us. Holding multiple public hearings doesn't change that. Public meetings are not meaningful communication when somebody, residents, remain unaware. When outreach fails to inform the very people most affected, it's not transparency, it's not communication, it's exclusive and a form of control. I've spoken and written many times before as a voice for our neighborhood. Yes, I've been direct and sharp at times, but I am coming from a place of urgency, not hostility. My goal has always been to help you understand the real human impact of the decisions you're making. So I'm asking you now to slow the process down in Greenfield. Take more time, educate the public in plain language, and, most importantly, find a way to ease the financial burden on residents before passing any sort of neighborhood plan. I'll close with the words of Illinois Governor J.B. Pritzker, quote, "Tyranny requires your fear, your silence, and your compliance. Democracy requires your courage," end quote. Please choose courage. Best, Amy Steger, Greenfield Neighbor."
Thank you. I am calling Andrew Lager and Mike Connell.
Can I have a moment till you start the time? Because just a moment till I can catch a breath for a moment.
So who's going to go first? You, Andrew, or you, Mike?
I thought you said my name first. What would you...
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I'd just like to start by thanking Carol Poole last week for speaking at the Plan Commission. Her insight was priceless and was quite insightful, speaking on the behalf of residents in the rural areas. She brought up a lot of excellent topics. Also, I'd like to thank Dave Herbst for being a watchful eye in person. I'd like to thank you, David, and other people that are watchful eyes, but this man is highly resourceful. It's truly inspiring. As for the Greenfield Plan, we already are an agrahood. I know that term was floated around a lot through the Planning Commission. Mr. Jetsor, you might know that agrahood term. Some other people might. But we're already an agrahood at a larger scale. It's a beautiful stretch of land that should be protected and preserved for farmers in the future and for local farming sources and produce from farm to table. We all hear about that at restaurants and so forth. As for FUDAs, future urban development areas, how about considering an RPSA, Rural Protection Sensitivity Areas? You can rewind that, listen to it on your own time. Also, I'd like to share that Brad Sippel misspoke last week, trying to, you know, saying that I was for reversing the buffers that I proposed. I was not. I was simply talking about a sliver of land, about one and a half to two acres from that portion of the southwest, the West Hill Drive area. So on another topic, Mr. Tremlett, if you're listening, if you can, please listen to this in detail, as I refer to the map areas, you'll know what I just spoke about. I did play several voice messages with you, and that was not returned. I included you in emails. Those were not returned. I was hoping for more transparency, that us taxpayers have paid, and just some more clarification. Also, I clearly dedicated the majority of those three minutes to that one and a half to two acres, as I just mentioned, of that private protected land. If you were there, if you saw that, that's pretty... A simple solution for many people. Micah, you might know what I'm talking about there. It's a pretty simple solution, doesn't utilize any extra land. I'd like to see a shoulder of hands from the Alders who actually watched the Plan Commission last week. I know, Mr. Jentsor, you were there. Micah was there in person. Okay, so we've got... Mr. Maldonado, you did not watch the Plan Commission. Gabriel Gerhart was there. Did you watch it? Okay, you did.
Watched live.
Okay, okay. So, well, that's not a bad representation, but we're trying...
I watched it as well, Amy.
Yes, yes, okay. I sincerely emphasize what Carol Poole shared, setting aside land to plan for what the residents' concerns are, that this could take more time. Thank you once again, Carol Poole. You're amazing. I yield that time to Mrs. Poole.
Thank you. So, Mike, go ahead.
Mike Connell, 2315 South Sine. I'm very frustrated. I feel like the council has not been communicating with us very well. We have a couple of Alders that have no skin in the game, basically, because they don't live where we do. So again, I'm feeling unrepresented. I've brought some issues to my Alders, and I feel like I got an answer from one, but I still feel like I was blown off. And I've had several close calls because of a stop sign that was just put in down on Irish Lane, because now Irish Lane traffic doesn't stop because they know that Sine will. This whole thing with this planning just leaves us out. It's take it. It's not take it or leave it, it's take it. And at what cost? This is not how a city is supposed to be run, not even close. You have to engage with us for the whole thing. I've seen many of you at many things. Gabby, you're awesome. Dave, talked to him a lot. I've talked to Micah last week. Thank you. I just don't feel like the city hears us. They haven't heard us for many years. We used to be the slum before you guys picked up L.I. Drive. I still feel like we are that, because we get zero from the city. It's, you stay down there and don't come up here. It's just so frustrating to me. It's the same thing with the police. We don't have an issue with any fire, because they've responded very quickly to anything we have down there, but it seems like the administration doesn't even know we exist. I've talked to Chad. I get responses from him very well. Thank you. But I'm just very disappointed in this whole thing, because you're basically pushing out the people that are there. That was your low-cost housing or mid-price housing. The price of that housing is going through the roof, but you're basically kicking us out. Between the taxes and the other fees that are getting shoved down our throat, you're basically saying, "We don't want you." And to tell you the truth, I wish we were back at a town, because I'm not getting anything from the city except for tax bills.
Thank you. Also, I am calling Rainey Halverson. Okay. It's registered only to... Oh, it's only registered in opposition. Okay. Do we have anyone else? Okay, so I am closing the public hearing. Okay, next, I open the public hearing and ordinance 2025-0-12 and Planning Commission Resolution PCR 03-25, adopting the South Stonet Prairie Neighborhood Plan as an amendment to Appendix A of the City of Pittsburgh Comprehensive Plan. So do we have anyone wishes to... Oh, yes, we have one. Okay. I will... I am calling to David Haidt. He wishes to speak in opposition.
Again, David Haidt, 5855 Woods Edge Road. So I want to focus this one on the context of what comprehensive plan is. So the comprehensive plan is a guidance document, but it was created back in the day, 28, 1928, to give communities power over how their city will develop. There's no property rights that are associated with it, as there might be for zoning under certain circumstances. The property owners whose property is covered by the plan have zero property rights. This is an equal opportunity plan. It's a plan owned by the community, by the people of the community, for the development of the community. The way that it was set up in the law is that the council and the Plan Commission are both democratically... Democratic bodies. So the members of the council clearly are elected, the mayor's clearly elected, and the members of the Plan Commission are appointed by the duly-elected mayor and confirmed by the duly-elected council. This is a democratic institution. The plan, it's a comprehensive plan for the people, for the community, is fundamentally a democratic institution itself. What's happened here, and what the City of Pittsburgh does, is removes unlawfully and unconstitutionally and unconscionably the power to plan from the Planning Commission. The Plan Commission does no planning. The law says its function and duty is to make the plan, to plan, yet it does nothing in that regard. It's presented with plans from developers for amendments, or, in this case, a neighborhood plan that's been developed by the plant staff and the consultant. Where's the community in this? And in fact, the committee that was appointed as the steering committee, there is no record of how it was created, what the criteria for the appointments were, what the criteria that was going to be used for the development of the recommendation as to whether the steering committee was going to recommend it. And in this case, you have developers co-funding it for the deal being half the seats, at least initially, slightly four out of the nine seats, for the developer, who has no property rights. So what happened to the democratic institution that is the Plan Commission and the community comprehensive plan that is what guides... It gives us our power to make the city in the wishes of the democratically... The democratic populace through you, through the mayor, and through the Plan Commission. This is deeply troubling, as I said in the first go-round. None of the things that led up to the appointment and including the appointment to the steering committee are public. No one knows how you knew that happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wishes to speak on this matter? Okay. I am closing the public hearing. Okay. So next, we move to the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Can I pull the minutes?
Yes. All those in favor of the consent agenda without the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, where is one with the minutes?
Can we just amend... Where are we? Eight, F1, the Organics Management Grant. Just the votes. I'm listed as against. I voted for, and I believe all the rights have voted against.
I believe that sounds correct.
If we just update that.
Okay. We can do that.
Move to make that update.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the amended minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay. So next, we move to item six, Administrators' Report.
Good evening, common council. I'll start with some events of note. Tomorrow, September 24th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., in the Oak Hall Room of the Community Center, will be the Urban Forestry Strategic Plan Open House. October 2nd, at 3:00 p.m., there'll be a ribbon cutting to celebrate the McGaw Park Pickleball Court expansion. As mentioned earlier, during the Proclamation for Fire Prevention Month, October 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., will be the Fire Department Open House, held at Fire Station Number Two on Marketplace Drive. There are a couple of upcoming meetings, public involvement meetings, that the Wisconsin Department of Transportation is hosting in regards to the corridor study for U.S. Highway 18151 from Dodgeville to County Highway PD here in Pittsburgh. The first of those meetings is going to be an in-person meeting on October 8th at 5:30 p.m. at Mount Horeb High School. And the second meeting being hosted will be a virtual meeting hosted August 9th at 5:30 p.m. Yes, October. Did I say September?
August.
August. Apparently, I'm really caught pecking the times there. Thank you for catching that. If anybody wants additional information on that, I'll be happy to share an email with you with that... With the link in particular to the meeting on October 9th. The Chicory Meadow Tennis Court Replacement Project is underway. The Tower Hill Shelter Rehabilitation Project should be concluding in approximately one month. The Sine Road Project, Phase Two, from East Cheryl to just south of McCoy Road, completed, and that road opened up last Friday. The remaining phase, Phase Three, which is the intersection McCoy and Sine, is anticipated to open and conclude in early November. I want to remind council, you got an email on this, but also share this for members of the public. The council email address will be down September 25th and 26th, while our IT staff adds an automatic reply to that email, indicating to anyone sending responses or emails to that email address that their email has been received and distributed to members of the common council. And then finally, to save the date, the annual Pittsburgh Business Appreciation Luncheon will be held October 30th from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the BTC Building in the Promega Campus. Watch for more information forthcoming on that. Any questions?
Okay. So we... Next is my report. So as you know, I have been, in the last couple of weeks, very busy with the budget. The budget was... The proposed budget is public, was published on Monday. I want to thank a lot of people that we worked for the last couple of months putting together this budget, the head of department, finance director, city administrator, deputy. You know, it was a team effort. I think I am bringing forward a balanced budget. I want to do my presentation to the budget next week on September 30. I recommend you to read the letter and to... If you have any question about the budget, please, you know, give me a call. Also, for the people that are residents, taxpayer, if you're reading the proposed budget and you have questions, please write... And you have questions, please reach out to us. You know, I don't mind to sit with you and explain which are my priorities for this budget, you know, and any other question that you have. So I want to say thank you again to everyone that participated. And as you know, I recommend the electoral official to participate or to attend the Finance Committee meeting next week. That one is going to help you a lot when you have to read the budget. The budget has more than 500 pages, so it's going to make it easier, you know, if you attend those meetings. And also, you know that you have until October 14 to submit amendment to the budget, and then the budget will be... On November 11, you will be approving the budget. So what else? I want to thank Governor Evers and his wife, because last night they did a reception to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, and they invited all the Latino leaders here in Wisconsin. It was a great event. Then I also participated in the Dane County City and Villas Association in Windsor. We went with Chad. And also, I did a tour of the new city hall in Windsor. Very impressive. I did a couple of ribbon cuttings. One of them was the grateful heart they care that opened here in Pittsburgh. that opened here in Pittsburgh in District Two. Also, the police station ribbon cutting last week. Was it last week? Yeah, last week. So it was great that this building is moving forward and is under budget for $9 million. I'm gonna repeat that for a long time. Then I had the opportunity to also to go to the ribbon cutter for the Juniper apartment and the Hartfield area, 169 units. So I want to, it was a great event. What else? Today I had my meeting with all the mayors of the region this morning. As you know, we talk about housing, public transportation. You know, it's a common theme for all of the mayor here in the region. We also had the opportunity to meet with the Oregon School Superintendent with Alder Raystack last week, too, to discuss Pittsburgh growth and some issue with the transportation in the school area. What else? And we also continue talking to people with the government team for the government proposal. We are gonna have a more definitive answer for you in the couple of months. And remember that Adam sent you an email. We are doing another tour for the HAV on October 7 and 9 o'clock. So if you want to go to the HAV to do a tour, this is an opportunity. It's gonna be almost, is that completion right now? Yeah, kind of. Close. The idea is we are gonna do the ribbon cutting by November, by November. And also, we are having our first meeting with the Oregon, Oregon, Marona and Pittsburgh to start exploring the district options for the district EMS and fire. I wanna keep you posted on those. That's it, any other? Oh, and finally, my last listening, information and listening session for the year is in District Four, Black Hawk Church, this coming Thursday from 6 to 8 o'clock. So if anyone, everyone is invited. It doesn't have to be from District Four. So I invited everyone to participate in this District Four. We are gonna talk about some of the city updates. I invited the chief of police, chief of fire, and other staff that are gonna do some update. So that's it. Any question, comments? Yes.
You're presenting the budget. You mentioned, is it next week?
Yeah, next week is.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yeah.
5:30 p.m. Special Finance Meetings.
Yeah.
Here in the chambers.
Thank you.
Okay, any other question, comments? Nope, okay. Let me see where we are now. Okay, so next we move to item eight. It's Commission and Committee Report, and we will start with Plan Commission.
I have a more extensive report, but I will start with the resolutions and ordinances. I will move approval of ordinance 2025-011 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0225, adopting the Greenfield Neighborhood Plan as an amendment to Appendix A of the City of Pittsburgh Dane County, Wisconsin Comprehensive Plan as amended by the Plan Commission.
Second.
Okay, so we have a second.
I'm gonna turn it over to city staff
Good evening, everyone. This evening, I just wanna open with some brief comments regarding both of the neighborhood plans. And then Brad will do a short introduction of Greenfield. Then when we get to South Stoner Neighborhood Plan, Brad will do another short introduction. Brad's introductions will just provide a little bit of background about the process and how we got here, so. The Greenfield Neighborhood Plan and South Stoner Neighborhood Plan are products of a community process that involved countless hours of time from the planning team, steering committees, and the Pittsburgh community. Without the extensive engagement of the Pittsburgh community, we would not have brought these plans before council today for consideration. This has been a transparent process with over 20 publicly noticed meetings, including Steering Committee sessions, neighborhood gatherings, Plan Commission meetings, and open houses. Residents, landowners, and neighbors shared their voices and provided their feedback that shaped these plans. I am deeply grateful to the Steering Committees who devoted countless hours to reviewing complex materials and offering thoughtful guidance. Thank you as well to Steve Tremlett and the MSA team for their heavy lifting and to Mayor Radifrada and to the Pittsburgh Common Council and Plan Commission for their leadership and support. A very special heartfelt thanks goes to my colleague Brad Sipple, who led this planning process with professionalism, grace, and endurance. Most importantly, I want to thank every community member who attended the meetings, provided feedback, and shared concerns. Your commitment made these plans possible. We heard Greenfield's voices to keep Greenfield green. Reflecting on your commitment to preserving what you love about your neighborhood, we also heard the call for creating vibrant, mixed-use neighborhoods where people can live, work, and play within walking, biking, or transit distance. All items that make a healthy neighborhood of the future. The plans before you this evening represent a thoughtful consideration and compromise. The plans are not perfect. Instead of, the plans are carefully balanced with respect for residents' concerns while charting a sustainable course for Pittsburgh's future. These plans would not exist without the generosity and persistence of this community. Thank you for your trust in city staff and constituents and consultants for guiding the planning team every step of the planning process. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm gonna do just a brief background on some of the timeline, the public engagement, and where the plans are now. And then I'll be open for questions, so. So this planning process has been about two years from the signing of the contract. It was budgeted before that. It was August of 2023 when the council approved the contract to begin the neighborhood plans. Throughout the process, there have been two updates and discussions at Committee of the Whole meetings, seven Plan Commission meetings. In March of '25, a contract extension was approved to cover some unforeseen, unforeseen complications with both plans to add a little bit of additional money to finish them. Then we've got Steering Committee approval for Greenfield was in May of '25. And, you know, through June, July, and through now, was primarily public and committee comment periods. And refinement of the final plan that is before you for adoption. Just a quick, I'm not gonna, I'm not planning on running through all of these, but just wanted to list most of the community engagement opportunities that were done throughout the process for Greenfield here. That included two open houses, two neighborhood meetings, in addition to the, to the six Steering Committee meetings and, you know, all of the online participation options. And then, of course, a staff, numerous phone calls, emails, and meetings with both stakeholders and residents. We had one month of comments opportunity from June through July for the, both the public and the committees and commissions on the current drafts. And those comments were taken into consideration and the staff recommendations were put into the document that's in the, in the plan today. I wanted to call attention to one, one of those recommendations that was approved by Plan Commission with, with an amendment to the, to the motion. And that was brought up by a comment. It was discussed at Steering Committee meetings, but it also was brought up as a, as a comment during the, during the most recent comment period that in the red-circled area, there's a, what has the potential to be an isolated pocket of medium-high-density residential. The rest of the area east of Blaney Road going north, basically to the northern, northern edge of the neighborhood, all has this designated as a, as residential or business park flex zone. But the, that flex area did not extend down to Burn Road. So the staff recommendation here was to add that similar type of business park flex, flex space to that, to that remaining parcel at Blaney and Burn. Again, that was, was included by the Plan Commission in the approval. And I think at this, at this slide, I wanted to also call attention that this, this is what the future land use and the preferred concept that is, that made it to the plan. The next slide shows the changes that came, came to Greenfield based on, you know, the first, the first set of land use, proposed land uses based on the bubble diagrams at the beginning of the process and how it's changed to the, to the current plan. And I have this in here for reference, but there were about five change, six changes to the goals and strategies based on the public comments and the committee commission comments. I have these listed here, but it mostly dealt with housing, housing variety, regional commuter rail and referencing that, you know, that one of the original reasons for establishing the food is along this corridor. Some enhancements to, and clarifications of sidewalks and bike facilities and street connectivity. And also a mention of potentially developing a multi-use path along the Pittsburgh Oregon Railroad. Obviously, it's still used for freight now, but wanted to make sure to call out that opportunity in the plan. And again, this is just for reference. I don't intend on going through the sewer and water utilities, but there were some changes made working with Public Works to recalculate some of the, some of the demand calculations. And it did change the recommended interceptor size, sub-interceptor sizes, but it didn't, it didn't extend to changing any of the recommendations or the takeaways from the plan, so. And that's what I have for Greenfield.
Okay, thank you. So I open the floor for questions.
And Mayor, just one more thing. I just wanted to mention the Plan Commission did pass this as amended, which is what the movement, what the motion was, including that amendment that Brad just mentioned with changing that future land use for that one small piece. And it passed 6-1.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Please, okay, Bill, you can start with you. When is the next? Mike, are you?
So I guess, a couple of points here just to, I guess, underscore the fact that this is a compromise that probably nobody is happy with. You know, at the beginning of the plan, R 3007 and R 8907 are mentioned, specifically calling out that we should be creating attractive, highly-intensive, transit-oriented neighborhoods. And this is not that. And it, you know, ideally, we'd have commuter rail. And that is, you know, as just mentioned, one of the main reasons that these food is, are in the locations that they are. And, you know, given that this is several decades out probably before any shovel hits the ground, anything can happen. So take that for what it's worth. You know, it's also concerning to me that this plan doesn't really offer a lot in the way of local amenities. It seems heavily car-dependent. I don't see how this is going to further the city's goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions or vehicle miles traveled. Another thing that's concerning to me is that we're talking about potentially putting housing right next to a highway, the most polluted and noisy area. It's been shown that, that people who live next to highways have any number of respiratory issues, dementia, Parkinson's, et cetera, at higher rates than people who don't live next to highways. And I guess, a point of clarification from Deanna and/or Brad. We've got these designations in here, you know, high-density, medium-density, low-density, et cetera. What do we think this is going to mean at the time any development would actually occur, given, you know, our recently updated zoning ordinance and the more comprehensive overhaul that will likely take place in the next couple of years before either of these neighborhoods, you know, starts any development whatsoever?
Yeah. These are consistent with our current land use categories in our comp plan as we don't know how the comprehensive plan update would affect those land use categories. It's obviously something that will be looked at as part of that update. But I think what these, what those future land use designations mean for not just these neighborhood plans, but all of the ones that have been adopted in addition to the entire future land use map will, that'll have to be considered when we, when we do the comp plan update. These, since these are consistent with the comprehensive plan, they are, I guess, we kind of have the same relationship to our current zoning as, as those categories do now. There's, you know, multiple zoning districts that can fit, that can fit consistently with, with each land use category, so. I don't know, does that answer your question?
Not entirely sure. I mean, 25 years from now, when somebody finally decides to sell and we get some development here, are they gonna look at this plan and say, what the heck are they talking about?
25 years is a long time in planning world, but not unrealistic. So we certainly have plans that we continue to work from that are 25 years old today. I mean, we certainly do. And we have a process where we can do minor amendments if things aren't kind of fitting anymore to the current market or the current housing demand. But I also wanna just put out there that should council decide to adopt the Greenfield Neighborhood Plan, and in 10 years, there's profound changes in the current development standards and current markets, there's absolutely no reason why council could direct our future staff to reopen those neighborhood plans and reevaluate them. They're, they're a working document that can be changed.
Thank you. Who is next? I have a couple of question, I don't know. Okay, okay. So I have a couple of questions so you can clarify the process, you know, about the Steering Committee. You know, when we selected the Steering Committee, can you explain what was the composition and the people that we chose to be in that committee?
Yeah. The Steering Committee was a mix of larger landowners, residents of the neighborhood. The Capital Area Regional Planning Commission had a representative.
Elected official.
Elected official. Think that.
It was a combination of all the stakeholders.
Yeah, it was, it was a representation of all the stakeholders that would, that, that had, had as an interest in how the plan developed, so.
And can you explain in this map for the people that they are watching now, what are the big changes from April 24 to current? You know, that what are the significant changes that, you know, that after receiving all the comment from the meetings, the Steering Committee, what are the biggest changes there?
Yeah, there, one of the biggest is there was a pretty big reduction in the overall density across the neighborhood. There was more area allocated for the low-density residential, which is, you know, about two to five acres per unit, which is what the existing neighborhood is also designated as. The flex areas were added with, with the business parks,
The flex areas were added with, with the business parks, so that, that kind of, in doing that, the higher, the medium-high and higher-density residential was, was pushed, and not pushed, but it was allocated east of the railroad tracks to minimize the impacts on the existing neighborhood. The area for commercial or mixed-use space was, was cut as well. And I think one of the other, one of the other big ones was that the air, the open space, parks, recreational space was all increased compared to the, compared to the first, first few iterations of, of the plan. I think those, those are probably the biggest changes to the land use. You know, as we went along, we refined it with potential trails in the street network, network on the preferred concept and everything, but.
So, so what you're saying that this current map looks like very similar what is already there?
Yeah, well, yeah, the, the current map, you're talking about the existing neighborhood or?
Yeah, the existing neighborhood, this, you know.
Yeah, that, that has undergone pretty, I think, pretty much no change. For, for most of the existing neighborhood, the future land use will not change when this is adopted.
And my other question is that, some of the question for clarification, Deanna, is we talked about the, this is where future FUDAs, and then we decided to, to, to bring them as, you know, discuss this as a neighborhood plan. So who decided to bring this as a neighborhood plan? Why would the city decided to do that?
I actually wasn't here when that original decision was made. So I will just say, those two neighborhoods, South Stoner and Greenfield, are the natural next FUDAs to look at, right? So if you look at our overall FUDA map, the next natural step for doing an expansion of the urban service area is clearly Greenfield and South Stoner.
Do you know, were these FUDAs identified in the comprehensive plan back, was it maybe 2009, 2010 as well?
Oh, yeah, even earlier.
Yeah, the, the FUDA process, I think, started in the early 2000s and the, I think they, they had the, the FUDA, I had the, the rough idea of where the FUDAs would be. And it looked pretty much like it did now, I think, by the, probably the end of 2006 or so, before the comprehensive plan was adopted, but it was incorporated into the 2009 comprehensive plan.
Okay. Okay, Dave, and then who has, Nicole?
Fair number of these meetings, I missed the last planning meeting, but the whole time, every meeting I went, I, honestly, I thought, what are we doing here? Why, let's leave this alone here, this neighborhood. I've been dealing with issues from Public Works quite a while. My Connor runs a sump pump in his house steady, you know, when it rains. Many people like that, and we, it's, you know, it's not a fancy, it's not a fancy neighborhood, you know, it's just a neighborhood of working people. And I, I just didn't see the, see the need to expand, expand here, you know, as Alder Jetsor mentioned, we have no bus service there, you know, next thing we, we do this, then the residents, well, where's our bus? And, you know, water and sewer, I, I never felt this made sense. And then I was, I was disappointed, you know, when requests were made to create a buffer in the southwest corner, you know, those told, oh, we can't, we can't do those, or, or, you know, it's not our, not our policy, not our planning policy to, to do this. And so, huge, huge neighborhood opposition. And the main, the main property owners that would kind of control this, basically, when the city knocked on their door, they said, get the hell off our property, you know, to paraphrase, I just, I just never felt this made sense. I'll ask, you know, I'll pose this to the Alders. How many of you are affected by new development? You know, I can say I am in my neighborhood, large developments are going in, they're going to affect the traffic on our street. Might be some plus or minus, but I don't think any of you are, where you live will be affected by any, by much of this new development. And, and so here, I, I look at the neighbors and I say, they don't, they don't want it. I don't, I don't see this as a big value to the city. We have plenty of places where we're developing more housing, you know. Madam Mary, you saw the additional request for another Texas rap in Quarry. You know, we have this Seminole Highway and McKee Apartments going in, the 10-story. You know, we were looking at, we might be looking at 2,500 people, you know, with those developments we have going on right now with those. I, I just don't, I don't feel this is a good, I wish we wouldn't have gone down this road. I'm not opposed to the other one, the other one seems to make sense. I never felt like this makes sense, and I'll, I'll be voting against it.
Okay, thank you. Nicole?
I just have a few questions or clarifications. So just to understand, the point of this plan is to ensure land usage and it is not kicking anyone or forcing anyone off their land currently, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make very, very sure of that. The other piece, Brad, you'll have to remind me, I believe in one of the, or Deanna, in one of the steering committees, I believe there was conversation around actually trying to improve some of the flooding issues that are occurring here. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's been kind of discussed throughout the, the whole process. I mean, that, early on, we heard a lot about the existing water and flooding issues in Greenfield and, and there, you know, there were studies done previously, the Curry Court area, you know, that Public Works had, had studied that and come up with some solutions to solve some of those stormwater issues through that process. But the new development, based on, you know, through this plan, there was a conceptual stormwater management plan developed that proposed retaining, at least in the, in the current version of the plan, it proposed retaining 100% of the, of the stormwater to, I guess, prevent any stormwater from the development to, from impacting the current neighborhood. And largely, a lot of that, a lot of that water that flows through the neighborhood now would most likely be stopped or slowed before it got to the neighborhood as a result of the new development. So, you know, the, the runoff from the northwest and, and the, the west is all coming through the neighborhood right now. But the, the new development would capture and filter a lot of that before it made it. So it, it has the possibility of improving the stormwater issues in the current neighborhood when this stuff develops, when or if.
I think that was one of the pieces that I appreciated the most as we were going through this, because as people were bringing up flooding issues, it was very clear, back when this neighborhood was established, there was not the, the types of things that we, like this neighborhood would not have been built today only because the flooding wouldn't have been at, to an acceptable level. And so I really, really appreciate that. Can you restate also how many, I know you said at the beginning, how many neighborhood listening sessions were there, how many communications went out?
I don't have the number of communications that went out, it was a lot. There were two, two open houses for Greenfield. The, the first one was joint with South Stoner Prairie, but we did end up splitting, splitting them because there were so many people here for Greenfield. There were two meetings specific to the neighborhood. The first one was a, a visioning meeting, so it was, it was over in the community center. We had boards and, and kind of photo preference activities and things like that. And then we came back with some of the land use concepts based on those meetings and got feedback from the neighborhood. So those two were specific to Greenfield, so those were in addition, that we didn't do those for South Stoner Prairie. We had the online mapping option for people to, to go on and make comments. We had the community survey, which, you can see here, 79 comments on the map and 211 responses on the survey. We had six steering committee meetings, and all of those were open to the public, and, and several of them had pretty significant public comment, amount of time devoted to public comments. Those, and those were predominantly the public-focused ones, but then again, there were, there was a focus group with the development community, a lot of discussion with the stakeholders and landowners. And, and I'll, I'll mention that the, you know, materials were available on the webpage, and most of the meetings were notified through the, the city's notify me email list as well, so.
Thank you for reviewing that. I guess the last kind of comment I want to make is the, the word tyranny that was brought up is, is one that's very, I think, personal to all of us who are in public service, and a piece that I don't take lightly. My father and family actually owned land in Iran. They have an orchard that the country since took away from them when they left the country under tyranny. And so I, I just want to, this is very similar to when I was on the Verona School Board, and a lot of us were called likened to Nazis during Jewish Holocaust for making kids wear masks. Words are really important. And while I believe that every farmer in our district who is upset about this has every damn right to be upset, because I think America has not done a great service to local farmers. I believe in, in rural service, I believe in rural healthcare. My company personally works at a net loss profit in a startup that we support who focuses solely on rural healthcare. So I, when, when we get farmers, farmers to come up to these mics and, and you all speak with passion, I think you have every right to speak with that passion. I don't judge it a single bit. And I also just want to be careful of the words that we use. This is not tyranny, no one is stealing anyone's land from anybody else. You can go ahead and call my dad if you'd like to hear about that. But I do, I do understand this is a very hard plan, and I think, I do just want to give kudos to everybody on the steering committee, even some who were saying, I cannot vote for this. And I said, that is, that is your right, that's why we have a, a variety of voices here at the table. And I really want to commend city staff, Deanna and Brad, I think you were really great at listening, and I'm super happy with all the residents who came out. We, we did listen, we had many, many calls. Agreeing and listening are two different things, but thank you for continuing to make your voices heard. Let's just be careful about the words we use. Thanks.
Thank you. Who's next? Laura?
All right. Deanna and Brad, I'll save my questions for the end. I'll make a few comments on, on the way here. Mike? Okay. Mike is on, okay. So I just wanted to first, you know, express my gratitude as others have to all the folks who have weighed in on this. You know, certainly as a newer alder, I kind of hopped in at the tail end of this process, but even still, it's the amount of passion, the amount of dedication and the amount of energy put into creating what is undoubtedly a compromised plan as, from every angle, is just staggering. And I wish, I really do wish that we had this level of engagement for so many other things in our community, because I think we'd be better off and we would have better outcomes. People would feel more like their government is representing them and is, you know, working on their behalf. I have really struggled with this, and it'll certainly be the hardest vote that I take, because on the one hand, as others have said, we would not build a neighborhood like this today, and it is so unique. And it is something that I don't think we want to lose sight of in our history by making sure that we are preparing for the challenges ahead. And at the other hand, I'm looking at some statistics from, I got it from the Greater Madison Metropolitan Planning Organization just this week, and their projection now is that 887,000 people will call Dan County home by 2050, which is 100,000 more than the Department of Administration's projections. Both of them put Pittsburgh at 52,000 and change residents here by 2050. And as we look at housing affordability, just the, the sheer supply and demand dictates that we need to be building more housing. I would have liked to have seen more density in this plan for some of the climate reasons that we've heard, some of the, the ease of service, providing the bus service, providing, kind of getting our return on investment, if you think of it from like a business standpoint, that we are, you know, if we were looking at a neighborhood like this and building it from scratch, we would be likely losing money. I don't think that's in and of itself a reason not to move forward, but I think we need to balance that consideration as we look at all of our growth in the future, that we are building in such a way that we are building communities that are long-term, fiscally self-sustaining and sustainable, so that we don't have to go to referendum every three years from 2050 to 2080, which would certainly not further our cause for housing affordability by any stretch of the imagination. I think, you know, obviously, one of the challenges here being that we have this existing neighborhood, and for that reason, I, as I said, I would have preferred to have more density in this plan, given the fact that this is so unique. I am willing to kind of make some more concessions and compromises from my standpoint than perhaps if, like when we talk about South Stoner Prairie here in a few minutes. And I think the density in that plan helps us build a tax base that I, I feel a little bit more comfortable that these two are coming forward at the same time, because we have one that's a little bit more dense that will hopefully help to offset some of the tax-based concerns that we have. I, I want to address a couple of comments that we've heard about whether folks have a stake in the game or not. And I think that is, in some ways, as Alder Vafadari said, you know, the words matter. And I, I think it is certainly correct to say that folks who live in Greenfield have more of a direct connection to what happens in Greenfield than folks who live in other parts of the community. I think it's also important to say that everyone in our city that pays our taxes, whether directly through property taxes or indirectly through their rent, has a stake in the game here as well. One of my concerns has been that we, and I guess, I'm, I'm okay with how it ended up in the end, if I'm being honest, but I, a little concerned that we, just how long the process has drawn out, and the fact that we've had a couple of folks say that we should stretch this out even further. If I'm not mistaken, we've spent somewhere between 300 and 350, $360,000 on this plan, and approved a budget amendment a few months ago to spend tens of thousands of dollars more to draw this out even further and have some of the same, you know, have more community input. I think, again, what, what comes before us, it was worth it in the end. I also think that it's not fair to continue to ask the other 35,000 residents of Pittsburgh who don't live in Greenfield to continue to pay more and more to get such slightly different outcomes that we are kind of just looking for a needle in a haystack to kind of pick it apart. I, I think without having a plan, if we were to just say, no, let's, let's vote this plan down and throw it out and say, you know, we're kind of going to wash our hands of it, I think, A, that would be disrespectful to the folks who've put in all the time, both of you sitting in front of us here, the members on this dais who were here long before myself, the members of the community who are here tonight, those who have put in all the effort for the last few years. I think it would be doing a disservice, and I worry about the long-term ramifications that if this were to happen five years from now, why would anyone want to participate if they go through a three-year, two-year process and then it gets thrown out again, and it gets thrown out again? I am perf, like entirely amenable to the argument that why are we doing this now? And I think that is a very fair question, and I appreciate, Deanna, you mentioning that and kind of answering that a little bit before. I don't know that I would, how I would have felt about it if, if that, if you were coming before us tonight to say, let's start this process, I might feel a little differently now that it's sitting before us. Like I said, I think it'd be a disservice to just say, never mind, we're going to throw it out. And also, it would negate some of the voices that were heard in this process. Who's to say that five years from now, we try again? And, you know, would we have, would our housing crisis in this community, in this county, be so pervasive that we say, no, we're not going to put a 200-foot buffer? No, we're not going to limit density because the crisis has only gotten worse? So I think in some ways, this provides that certainty and that, that, some of those answers that we really need to have as a community to move forward. I think as we, I wanted to also mention here, I apologize, looking through my notes, there were some comments, I think it was Mr. Jones, about why have we not developed into some of the parts that are already in the urban service area? There were some comments, I think it was Mr. Jones about, why have we not developed into some of the parts that are already in the urban service area? And I am 100% behind you on that. I think it is entirely frustrating as I live in Swan Creek and drive through Uptown that we have this nice four-lane road with bus service and we're sitting there with just empty fields that are, by the way, paying the same rural farmland tax rate as the folks who are outside the urban service area are paying. And it's, we're looking at moving south. I have a lot of frustrations with, and I've voiced some of these with some of those developers, that it's, given the state of the world and the state of our community, we can't sit here and wait for this 15 more years. We need to get that moving so that we are moving our community forward and not having to sprawl further south along Highway 14 or elsewhere in the community. I would also like to really quickly just ask the folks who have said that they feel there was a lack of communication. Communication journalism is my background of about 10 years in this, in that world now. I would love to sit down and hear what you think would be a better communication. I feel like there's been a lot, but clearly there is still a disconnect between the amount that's going out and feeling as if we're being heard and there is a two-way street. So any ideas that folks have in that regard? I am all ears and would love to sit down and hear from anyone who's got thoughts on that, especially as we look at some of our longer-term planning. I think with that said, I'm going to kind of go to my questions now and jump off my soapbox here for a little bit. One of the biggest concerns I've heard from folks, that in my district, in District 3, there's like six or seven properties that are in Greenfield. And one of the biggest concerns that I've heard from a couple of those folks is about the the interceptor and the sub-interceptors that would run under Irish Lane because of the issues it would cause with their private systems that would have to get ripped out and connected. So I guess my first question in that regard is, what, if anything, could we look at doing to perhaps move that sub-interceptor to Collector A, for example? And then it would, it'll run it to the far edge of the Jones, or the Stoneman property, then due south where we then collect with Collector B. So kind of just how Irish Lane exists now and Collector A is to divert traffic from there. Could we do the same with that underground infrastructure and divert it using Collector A as well? So that it wouldn't help the old Indian Trail side of the neighborhood, but at least it would minimize that that expense for a significant number of folks in that neighborhood already.
Yeah, that was looked at. I won't be able to provide much detail because the engineering is outside of my area of expertise. But for whatever reason, that was not seen as feasible.
I can add a little bit of color. Grades. Where Collector A is to go through, there's actually a little ridge line that you have to come up. And it doesn't make sense to run that interceptor through there. It has to do with the grades.
Okay. I guess my other question, or, and would that be the same then with the power line easement that already kind of goes through? It's very similar to where Collector A is now?
Well, interceptors are of course very deep under the ground and function a whole lot differently than overhead power lines, is what I would say. And to bring an underground interceptor through a big ridge line means you have to dig a whole lot deeper. Does that kind of make sense?
Yeah, I guess my thought is just if there's, if we've already acquired the right-of-way, that easement for the power lines, if there was a way to use that, as I think of, I think it was the last Greenfield Steering Committee meeting, there was a comment about limiting the use of condemnation for utility, for utilities. And I noticed that is in the plan. So again, that's just another thing that I would point out and say that this is community input going directly into the plan. It's in red font and everything. You can write, you know, look right at it. So I guess, you know, if we're trying to move in that direction, is that even a remotely feasible option to use the right-of-way or the easement that's already been acquired?
That easement is not Fitchburg's easement. We really don't have any right to that power line easement.
Okay. I have one last question and then I'm done. One of the, another kind of point of contention is that I've heard quite a bit as well is about the city's commitment to minimizing the cost of those utility hookups. I know, Madam Mayor, you've said this. I've agreed with it. I know others have as well about trying to find ways to minimize the cost for the folks who would be required to hook up to this, to the municipal infrastructure once it goes through. And there's some concern that I believe that's one of the emails, I think Amy Steger mentioned, if I recall correctly, that that's not included in the plan. So certainly any, you know, all of us are up here and could be kicked to the curb at the next election. Is there, is it even remotely like feasible as part of a neighborhood plan? Would a neighborhood plan in general include language to that effect? Or is that something we could add? Or is it something that because we don't have kind of the, the exact details yet, that it would be kind of prescribing a future council to, you know, kind of tying their hands and saying, well, the past council approved this?
What is the language you're asking for? Like promising of funding for a hookup?
No, like what we discussed in the past, it was how we can help the neighbors that they need to be connected to the sewer and the water main with the cost. And we discussed in Plan Commission many times that the city, and I think we discussed that internally, that the city will look to determine if we can include those costs in the cost of the project or look for grants to minimize the cost. Because, yes, they are like, I don't know, $30,000, $40,000 is what people are talking, I don't know. I don't know how much it's going to cost in the future because remember that we talk about this plan. This plan is maybe is going to come in 10, 15, or 20 years. It's not something that's going to come next week or in one or two years. So, yes, I think and I am behind the neighbors in this, that, yeah, we need to, if we are pushing this plan forward, I think we need to have some, you know, we need to find some solution on how to help them to mitigate the cost. I firmly believe in that. But I don't know if we can put it in the project, you know, that the city will look for options, explore for options on how to mitigate those costs. That one is a very simple language. I don't know why we cannot put it there, so.
I think the message has been received by city staff quite loudly and clearly that as we look at the Irish Lane project in particular and the extension of sewer service farther south, that we will need to try to find options for the common council to consider. That would be a deviation from the city's current policy as it relates to required connections. And I will also add that in addition to city policy and or ordinance that requires connections, which also makes it quite problematic to put specific language in this plan or any plan, is that there are state statutes and Madison Metropolitan Sewerage District requirements as it relates to when connections are expected and are required. So the city of Fitchburg does not have exclusive jurisdiction or domain over this topic. And that's one of the inherent challenges here that city staff will need to be examining as we consider the installation and extension of sewer service farther south. We do know from a previous conversation during the CIP that the, I think the earliest that Irish Lane could see sewer, sewer infrastructure, not even a connection, would be 2029. And I believe our Public Works Director, City Engineer Tim Volker, mentioned that there are a number of moving parts related to that project right now that don't necessarily even indicate that it's a given that sewer infrastructure will be there in 2029, let alone connected infrastructure. That still needs to come farther south before we can even begin to connect any infrastructure that's in Irish. So questions about sewer and the connection fees are all very important and valid questions. City staff is aware of those concerns and the potential financial impacts on residents. And I can assure you that we will be looking at options that we can present to the common council for consideration as sewer infrastructure and more importantly, connection to sewer infrastructure becomes required or expected. Thank you.
Okay, Bobbi.
Could you go back to the map that shows the changes between the, I just wanted to make a quick point that if, even that initial map that came out in April 2024, if a city planner, without talking to the neighborhood, had come up with a plan, it would not look like that. It would not look like that much low density. And then I do think that the changes that were made to the current plan is indicative of, of hearing the neighbors' concerns and which I think was reflected in an increase in green space, more buffers between medium density and low density, and then also just overall more low density. So I think there were some definite changes that were made. I understand that there's a lot of resistance to this plan. I will just say that the city does not own any land and we don't currently do requests for proposals for land development. We may do that in the future, but we don't do that now. And so this is, this neighborhood plan will drive decisions if development comes. So if somebody sells their land and wants to develop it, this will help drive it. I actually think in a lot of ways, based on what I've heard from the neighbors, this is a good outcome because this is pretty, this is low and medium density. And our medium density category is actually quite low density. Other cities might have medium density that's much, much higher per acre. So you're still going to look at a lot of single-family homes potentially in a medium-density district. The fact that this exists as is means that you're not going to plop an apartment building somewhere in here based on this plan. If there was no neighborhood plan, that could happen with just a rezone. So I think this actually protects the character of the neighborhood much more than no plan at all. And then also say that, you know, I, the needs of farmers and agricultural land is very important. It truly is. And so I appreciate those comments a lot. I will say that I think that's something that we have to grapple with into the future and make sure that we do maintain green space. I would say the other thing is that a lot of Americans across the country, and also in Wisconsin and also in Fitchburg, hold a lot of their wealth in their land and in their property. That's where people build wealth. And so there are going to be landowners in this area and other areas around Fitchburg that are going to want to sell their land to get that equity out of it. And so that will happen regardless. The city does not drive that. That's driven by people's personal decision-making. And if, if certain farmers want to leave their land green forever and keep farming it, I think that's amazing. And I think we should do that. I think that's beautiful. But some people are going to want that equity out of their land. And I think that's just the fact of the matter. And I think making sure that we have a plan that reflects what we want, what, what, a plan that the neighbors had a chance to have input into matters a lot. And so I think this is, ultimately, I personally think this is, reflects a successful neighborhood input into this planning document. And the one last thing I'll say is that if we want to preserve agricultural land, and I'm talking about this not with this plan in specific, but broadly in the city, if we want to preserve green space, you actually have to move, you have to do more density throughout the city. Because we can fit, we, lots of residents are coming. We need to build homes for them. If we build high-density homes, which is a lot of what we're doing in other parts of the city, as I know, I'm sure many people have noticed, you can preserve green space and you can actually create larger buffers between current housing and housing because you're putting more people on a smaller plot of land. I do think preserving green space is really important. And I actually think one of the ways we do that is to create density where we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Micah? Okay, go ahead.
One question. Does the reduction in size of the sub-interceptor on Irish change any of the costs substantially? Or is majority of the cost digging a big hole?
It, as far as I know, it doesn't change the cost at all. Or not at all, but significantly.
Not, not to make it substantial enough to talk about. Okay. All right, I'm going to talk for a few minutes. So I want to acknowledge at the start, so just, I want to thank everyone for coming, not just tonight, but to all the other meetings. And I do agree with you at that. I think sometimes we up here get caught in planning speak a little and we talk a lot about housing and density and units per acre and building the missing middle housing. And we do kind of look past some of the residents who already live in the neighborhood and bought that house for a reason and enjoy living there for a reason. I just want to acknowledge that and say I do that sometimes too. And I hear you. And we do want you here. We want the current residents that live there here. And we want the farmers that are there here as well. City planning brings this giant levels of uncertainty to it when you're trying to look out all these years in the future. And these little bits of uncertainty over decades, they build up for the people who live here. And I watch this happen and I see people just talking past each other. So when we say this could be 10 years, 20 years down the road, you rightfully hear that and say, why are we planning this now? Plan it in 20 years. And that's totally valid. But the truth is that we just don't know. It could be 20 years. It could be five years. And that's why we create plans that aren't zoning and they aren't instructions to develop land. They are land use for if someone, like Gabrielle said, decides to sell their land, that this is what they are allowed to do with it. All we can do is take the information that we have and make the best decision that we have with it at that time. We do have a housing crisis and I don't think it's fair to say that it should just be someone else's responsibility to build homes for people that want to move to Dan County. The average age of a first-time homebuyer right now is 38. I bought my first house when I was 28 in 2010, right after the financial crisis. I got a 3% mortgage. I can't tell people to go do what I did. I got lucky. It's just not the reality for people. I have a single-family home. It's in a nice lot. I have woods in the back. I understand why people in Greenfield love the neighborhood that they live in. And at the same time, we're told all the time that we're building too many apartments for young professionals to move here and that they should be able to purchase a home. But the reality is that the home that they can afford is in a medium-density neighborhood that we're building, like Terravessa or Crescent Crossing. We built Crescent Crossing less than a mile from my house, so there is development in my neighborhood since I've been here. And if I took Crescent Crossing and I dropped it into that medium-density section up there, what you would see is kids going to the park and neighbors chatting with each other and kids waiting for the bus in the morning and people walking their dogs. And those, the people in that neighborhood sit on boards and commissions and they're involved in their community. And the, the character of a neighborhood is not defined by the land use or the zoning or the number of units on an acre. We can preserve the character of a neighborhood and still welcome new residents into the neighborhood and build a community with them. And so just to kind of jump on the plan, the plan has a 25% increase in low-density residential and open space from this initial draft to the current draft. And it has a 37% decrease in business park and high-density residential, with almost all of that having been moved east of the train tracks. Just to call it kind of like how this has changed over time. As has been said before, if we reject this plan and have no plan, every decision comes ad hoc and whoever's on council gets to decide what happens with that proposal. And there will be proposals. If we send this back to the steering committee, I don't honestly think there's going to be that many changes to it. And honestly, the feedback I've gotten recently has been much less about what's in the plan and more about whether or not the city is going to stick to it. And I think that's a valid concern. And just from my perspective, I'm one of eight. But I can say that after the process that this has gone through, I'm pretty unlikely to support major changes to this plan at any point in the near future. So that is, I mean, that leads to passing this plan. I am concerned about improving the relationship between the neighbors and the city. I mean, I have heard what you said. But I also have seen positive engagement in this process of these two years. I've seen positive engagement around bike and pet safety and tree preservation and park design and maintenance and stormwater. And even people just saying, I would like a restaurant nearby. And so all I can say is that if this plan passes and a development proposal comes forward, if I hear about it, you will hear about it. And then we can discuss it and move forward and make decisions about what we're going to do with that proposal at that time. And I just would like to then see that engagement that we saw over the last two years come back and that positive engagement and we can kind of work together. And I just, I hope that even if we don't agree or we compromise on things, that if I stay engaged and you stay engaged, we can kind of chip away at this little bit of like cynicism or distrust that has built up over, it's not even just years, it's probably decades. And just start to make a little bit of progress on that. So I'm, over time, I wish I could say more. I'm happy to talk privately if people want to talk about this in the future because I, I mean, I am your alder. And so come and we'll stay engaged. I mean, I am your alder, and so come and we'll stay engaged and continue to talk. But thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment. The staff requested just a simple amendment to allow staff to make technical changes in the appendices. Nothing significant, just corrections.
Is it a friendly amendment?
Yeah, let's vote.
Second.
Okay. All of in favor of the amendment, are you?
Aye.
And your post, emotion carried. Okay. Before we vote in the final amendment, it would be, yeah, the ordinance as amended, I want to say thank you, Deanna and Brad, you know, I, I have seen you since 2023 working in this project and also Tim? No, who is that?
Steve.
Steve, I am all good. Steve, the consultant, our consultant is online. So Steve, thank you very much for all your guidance in this project. And you know, I understand that it has been, this is very challenging for the neighbors because we have never done, and, and, you know, a neighborhood plan with that existing neighbor, neighborhood. So that one make another complication. And I know that change is difficult, and I know that you think that the city is trying to take you out of your land or the neighborhood. And no, what we're trying to do here is to try to improve the area, to bring the infrastructure. I am very concerned about Greenfield that doesn't have stormwater, that, you know, with climate change and with the rains, I am concerned that in the future, yes, it's going to get flooded even more. But, so the idea here is with information that we have writing out, this is the best plan that we can have. And I think that people think that, some of you, I think that don't agree that this is a good plan, or this half-done, or it's missing more density. But I think this plan is going to protect the neighbors in the future. Is one of the landowners decided to sell a piece of land because I have seen farmers selling the land. Like I mentioned, you mentioned that, you know, how we're going to protect the neighbors in the case that a development comes in the future. I think there is a plan now, a guidance, what we ambition today, that this area will look like. We are not making any changes, drastically changing in the, in the density is, is, you know, practically with adding more single-family that we need. People here complain that we are building too many apartments, that we don't offering more ownership option. And, you know, here in this plan, we are bringing more single-family ownership, and it looks like the existing neighborhood that we already have, we are not making, I don't think that this plan is changing the area drastically. So I think, I think it was a compromise from April 2024 to the current map, and I want to thank the neighbors, you know, for, you know, for your input, patient, maybe you think that we don't listen to you, we listen, and sometimes we don't agree, but we listen to you. For your patience, for your feedback, for all the emails that I received during these two years, for all the, you know, participation, especially the steering committee, some of the elected officials here. So I want to thank everyone in this process is, yeah, it's a challenge. It's a challenging process, but I think this plan will provide some guidance for the future and some protection. And I also believe that if we want to protect farmland, we need to increase the density. I agree with you, Mark, that, yeah, there are plenty of infill land in other part of the city, as some parcel, but we wish that the people try to sell those lands so we can develop more apartments, more houses inside the service urban area, but unfortunately, it's not happening. But this is, this is, we are trying, we are trying hard, you know, to, to do the infill But this is a plan for the future. This is how I see it. So, so I want to say thank you to you, too. Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, so we are, do a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr. is absent. Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jetzer?
Aye.
Alder Ladace?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Regstead?
Aye.
Alder Vafadari?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. So next, we have another one. Who is, Gabrielle, you're moving on?
Sorry. I move approval of ordinance 2025-012 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0325, adopting the South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan as an amendment to Appendix A of the City of Fitchburg Dane County, Wisconsin Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Plan Commission did pass this unanimously.
Okay, thank you. So who's going to go first, Deanna or Brad?
I'll jump into South Stoner Prairie. All right, so similar timeline here. You know, the steering committees fell slightly differently, but same point, you know, we started, the contract was approved in August of '23, and, and here we are, September of 2025, with a, with a final draft plan. Similar public engagement, as I mentioned during Greenfield, the two, there were two neighborhood meetings specific to Greenfield that we didn't do in South Stoner Prairie, but there were probably more stakeholder meetings. I, I think South Stoner Prairie had, had a unique situation where you've got quarries operating in the area now. So there's a lot, a lot of communication on what future plans are, what the land will look like after they're done. So complicated plan, but in a different way. Again, this is, this is now the third, the third public hearing we've had it, had on it, or that we, yeah, that we've had on it, and we got 35 comments. I don't think I mentioned in Greenfield. I think we had 31 from Greenfield and we had 35 from the, you know, June to July comment period this year. There were about three, three main changes between, as a result of the public comment period and the committee commission comments on South Stoner Prairie. One of them was the same housing strategy amendment that had Greenfield, that was done on Greenfield, consider amending the comprehensive plan to allow for, I should change that, that's, that's the old wording, but the, consider amending the comprehensive plan to allow for more, more housing variety in the low-density district, or low-density future land use category. There was also a design guideline added related to false runages and making sure that any sort of pedestrian or commercial area that is pedestrian-oriented, or any mixed use or, or commercial area would have the buildings, the public entrances facing the facade, the street-facing facade. And then additionally added a strategy to design the streets for 20 mile-per-hour speeds whenever feasible. Again, there were recalculations to the sewer and water demand on South Stoner Prairie. This didn't result in any changes to the recommended infrastructure. That's it, just have those maps there for reference. Go back to land use. So any questions?
Okay, thank you. Dave?
One, I don't know if you can answer it. Tim, Ken? We're making substantial investment improvements on Fitchroona Road. Will this development bear any of that cost, or is it all on me and my, my residents in District One?
I can't answer that.
All the residents of Fitchburg, I pay for that.
We'll all pay, we'll all pay for that, so that development, that's the answer, right?
Well, let's, let's just make sure we clarify that when new developments come forward, the developer is responsible in the vast majority of cases for adding new infrastructure to include roadways, curb and gutter, sidewalks, and utilities. The city does not typically pay, nor do the city's taxpayers typically pay in most situations for new infrastructure related to developments. There will likely be special assessments charged to the benefiting property owners in this particular area who do choose to develop their properties for any of the infrastructure that might be added through the Fitchroona Road reconstruction project, specifically additional sewer capacity. So I just want to make sure that, that it's clear that in the vast majority of cases, city taxpayers are not paying for infrastructure related to development.
But the Fitchroona Road, that one is a question that we have.
So with Fitchroona Road specifically, obviously that's been designed to accommodate future growth. As with any roadway, we're going to take a, you know, a look at what the estimated volumes will be over the life of that road. And the common council has an opportunity to weigh in to what the cross-section of that road looks like, which a common council here in the city did do that. But ultimately, that road is being paid for, of course, through borrowing, some grant funding. So to that point, yes, today's taxpayers are paying for that road, but they are not paying necessarily for the roads associated specifically or infrastructure specifically for this or any other development.
But we are sharing the cost with the town.
There is a cost share with the town of Verona on this as well.
5%? That's, that's not.
Well, I know, but, you know.
It's insignificant.
Well, but we are doing some cost sharing, you know what I mean?
Doing what we can, yes, understand. Thank you, Chad.
Okay, any other question, comment? Who? Okay, Bill and Gabrielle.
I'll be maybe a little more harsh of a critic on this one than I was on Greenfield just because this is a truly Greenfield development, lowercase g, Greenfield. There's nothing here yet. And what I see is kind of a 20th century design here. It looks like we laid out the roads first, we decided what we're going to put there around the roads later. You know, you've got still separation of uses, the, the mixed use is, is over on the edges. People need to, it might be within walking distance, but they're going to have to cross busy roads. I'd like to hear more about the phrase "when feasible" for the 20 mile-per-hour speed limits. I don't imagine that's the case for the major collectors in there. I just, I, I'm disappointed that we didn't start by saying, let's build a space for people, let's start at that point, and let's build around it. Instead, it looks like we said, let's build the travel lanes for cars and build around We, we've had discussions of this and, you know, like I said, it's, it's just disappointing because we have the opportunity here to do something truly forward-thinking and put a vision forward, and I don't, I don't see that in this plan. You know, there's not like an overall vision of what we hope to build here. It's just kind of, it feels like more of, more of the same as everything else we've got here. Again, I don't see how this neighborhood is, is necessarily going to help us reduce our greenhouse gas emissions or our vehicle miles traveled, for instance. You know, and with, with the area that we've, we're using here, we can route transit through here, but it, it'll be a much longer route than if we were able to develop it properly, if, if that, if I can use that word.
Okay, thank you. Gabrielle?
I appreciate the amount of density that was brought into this plan. As I said, if we want to, you know, preserve green space, we need to put higher density, and the, the need is there. People want, people want to move here to Dane County. They're coming, and so we need to put, put them somewhere. So I think the only limiting thing here is how long the quarries are under operation. We talked about that at Plan Commission, that 2028, one of the quarries is up for renewal of their conditional use permit, so that'll be an important conversation about whether or not to extend that or move into potentially reclaiming that so that we can develop this. I also, you know, West Lacy Road and Fitchroona Road are, West Lacy Road is now a really beautiful road, Fitchroona Road will very soon be. I do hope that we can see an extension of bus service through this area very soon. Bill, your point is well taken about it not being the best, best it could be. I, I love your vision for what things could be, and I hope that we can talk about that more. But I, I appreciate how many residents are going to be able to live in this, in this neighborhood, and I hope that we can get some condos in here, too.
I have a question because one of the thing that I, you know, I am, knows 100% okay with this plan is the business park is on Lacy Road instead of bringing the house in there and the business park more like in the south. So do you know why do you guys decided to, you know, to, to put the business park on that area? I imagine because, yeah, it's close to the road, it's access, blah, 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 yeah, I get it. But I was thinking more to have the high-density, all of that up to, to Lacy Road, you know what I mean, and then coming from high-density to medium to single, south, and move the business park more like a, I don't know, southwest, you know what I mean, kind of moving to Fitchroona? I don't know.
Yeah, that, that was looked at. I think ultimately it was undesir, well, first, one reason was connectivity with the existing business park, so it wasn't, you know, too separate. You know, I guess a business park separated by residential and then more business park. And I think the other one was for transportation access rather than having business park in the middle of the neighborhood and, and having, you know, the, the, the traffic needing to go through the entire neighborhood. You know, either way, to get out, it's directly on Lacy and it can access that. I don't know if that's an arterial or collector. Yeah, and, and directly on Commerce Park, so you can head north on Commerce Park or get off on, on Lacy and head towards, you know, Verona or the 18151 interchange. So those were the, those were the main reasons it was placed where it was.
Okay. Logan and then Mike.
My comments on this will be much, much briefer than, than Greenfield, but I do have two quick questions, and I will first just say thank you for working on this plan as well. I think this is generally a good plan. I understand that the connection to the immediate east at the far northeast of this planning area is, to the Edgewood Campus is probably not feasible, given the grades and some of the other conversations that have been had. I think it's a missed opportunity. I just wanted to say that for the record. I also do like the neighborhood mixed use being right there, though. I could see that being an attractive kind of entertainment district if they're able to host tournaments and things at that property. I'll echo the mayor's comment about the business park and kind of keeping some of the lower-density housing closer to Lacy. It feels like Lacy going pretty much all the way toward Seminole and beyond. There's a lot of houses that back up to it, so it would not be a well-served area for transit or, well, it would not benefit as well from transit versus, say, more uses that face that. My one big concern, and I know I emailed Deanna and Brad, I emailed both of you about this, was the timing of the quarry as well. I'm not so, I'm not really all that concerned about the 2028 one. What would concern me is if the, kind of the southern phase of what would that be, one of, is that 2A, 2B, right in the middle where the collector kind of splits off? If that were to then be quarried after we decide in 2028 theoretically not to renew the conditional use permit for the existing quarry, do they just move their operations south? And then we have kind of two separate neighborhoods develop without that connecting piece in the middle that would funnel more traffic onto the intersections like Lacy and Commerce Park and Collector A and Fitchroona. And then I would worry as well about the, some of the potential neighborhood up, confusion or frustration with some of the more high-density uses that are in that middle section. It seems like when we build neighborhoods with single-family and then we add high-density after the fact, even if that was in the plan, if that was, the single-family came first and the folks who moved in a year ago and the single-family don't, don't want the apartments that were in the plan from the get-go the same. from the get-go, the same plan that allowed their home to be used. So I'm trying to prevent some future, future headaches for future council and future community members. So I guess that's, that's kind of my big concern. I don't know what, what can be done with that. I don't know. I didn't phrase that in the form of a question, so I get points off from my jeopardy response here. But I guess I will throw that to the world and let it land where it will.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just provide a couple of comments. And I guess if a question develops out of that, just feel free to ask. But yeah, I, I think, I totally get your point. The, and I'll also add that it's not just a function of when the quarry operators and landowners decide to develop, but it's also the utilities. You know, the South Stoner Prairie neighborhood is divided basically into two sewer sheds. And you've got, you know, the, the northeast of the neighborhood will be draining northeast. And then the southwest of the neighborhood will be draining northwest. So, you know, those are, the utilities will be coming at it basically from the edges. And it'll have to develop from the edges inward just based on the sequencing of that. So, yeah, I completely understand your point. And I'm not sure if there's anything that can be done with it in this context, but I think it's a fair point.
Thank you. No. Mike and then you.
Shut down.
You told me only one.
I mean, I'm pretty good with the, the density on this. I mean, I think it looks good. I, I think it would be good to, there's a lot of opportunities to make something really cool in this neighborhood. And I just, I would like us to be, as we go about this, intentional about how we design these individual sections as we go forward. Bill actually has an ally in me in that I would like, I would love nothing more than to see a nice European-style city somewhere in the world. And like, I, I really would. But I think we have an opportunity to maybe drive the conversation with developers or partner with the developers to design what we really want and get something that could be really good. So that's, the only other thing I'll say is this, I know it's not part of the plan, but the northwest corner up here kills me. Like, it's just, and I know that there's not, I assume there's nothing we can do about it. And I just, if there's anything we can do about it, it makes no sense to have that there with the rest of this plan. It doesn't fit in with it. But it is what it is. I'm also just throwing that into the universe. And I just await the absolutely incredible sledding hill that is going to be somewhere in this area. It will be, it will be wonderful. And I await it. It will be great. So that's all.
Thank you. Okay. One of the thing that I want to mention here is, you know, there is, there are two quarries that are active right now. One is, this is my, this is my, my concern with these two neighborhood plan that there are too many barriers to develop. So this one is, you know, there are two active quarries. Okay. And then one, we know that maybe it's going to be open for another 20, 25 years. And the other one is we have a conditional use permit that is going to expire in 2028. So in case that we are, all are here, in 2029, 28, some of us, we need to, when the renewal of that permit comes to us, we need to think hard. What are we going to do? Because if we want this plan to develop, we should, you know, I don't think that we need to renew that because otherwise we are going to be sitting in another plan that who knows when is going to, we are going to start the development. So that one is my true concern about these two plans is that the timing and the barriers to develop, that I think we need to think forward when the times come. Okay. Who is next? Bill. Oh, you want to say something, or? Okay, Bill and then you. Okay.
Am I correct when I, when I say that the only opportunity for commercial or retail is in the neighborhood mixed use? None of the existing LDR, MDR, MHD, NHD are allow retail?
Based on our current comp plan, yes. That's correct.
Oh, why we didn't thought about that? Why we didn't think about this, adding that to the plan?
I would say that we'll think about that when we do the comp plan.
Okay.
Rusty B, that's a commercial and a big, when we have the same, you gotta excuse my ignorance of our zoning, but it seemed like in lower levels, I don't know how feasible they'd be, but that's the example I think of.
Yeah.
Okay, so, correction. We can do some retail service in the high-density residential. And I would say that the Rusty B example would be what would fit into the neighborhood mixed use category.
Thank you.
Yep.
Deanna, do you think that the new urban high-density district that we just approved, it will be applied here, isn't it? Okay. Okay, okay. Okay, okay, okay.
But yes, it would, that is designed to go into high-density. But I, I would just like to say that the staff is, when we go into the comp plan, staff is very interested in exploring these land use categories and how they can kind of evolve to a more modern form that isn't based solely on the dwelling units per acre. So. And that can, if that change gets adopted into a future comp plan, it can be reflected into these neighborhood plans.
Okay.
You know, I think we'd all like to see some retail in there. But what this property has working against it is we have a large retail complex less than a mile away. You know, Orchard, Orchard Point is just up the, up, up the road. You know, so you balance these, balance these things.
Yeah, but there is no transportation. Okay. Yeah, okay. You need to use a car. Yeah, it makes sense. Okay. Gabriela?
I can't, do we, do we amend this in Plan Commission? I can't recall. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it included the, the housing strategy, 1.1 amendment.
Amendment.
Yep. And then, and then accepting all of the, the staff recommendations that were integrated into the final draft document.
I just want to clarify that my motion was intended to be this, as amended by Plan Commission.
Yep.
And then I also, should we do a technical corrections as well? I'd like to make a motion to amend, to add, to direct staff to make technical corrections.
Second.
All those in favor, those making those amendments, say aye. Aye. And your votes, motion carried. Okay, Logan?
Yep. I guess this is just kind of following up on the mayor's point. It was also what one of my questions was, too, that I forgot to ask because I can't count, apparently. Have we had, and perhaps this is in the plan, I want to say it might have been in the plan, any sort of conversations with the landowner that has like the Wolf property and kind of that southern area that has not quarried yet but could be? Do we have, I mean, you know, circumstances could change. But do we have a, an idea from them about what their intentions are? If they, you know, when they think they could be quarrying that or how long they think they could be quarrying that? Or do we not have a great idea of their intentions?
The timeline, there's no information on a timeline for it. We just know that there, there, there's an option to quarry the Wolf property and as an extension of the Yehara Quarry. So I know that they've been in discussion about that, and there is that possibility. But timing, they're, we weren't able to, to get any detail on, on when or exactly where that would happen.
Any other question, comments, or we are ready to roll call? Bill?
Sorry. Yeah, so, all right. So I guess I'm confused because I'm looking at this and thinking we're approving this plan with our current, well, I guess our most, next most recent land use designations, which are far more restrictive than, you know, our, our new urban high-density. Tell me again how that can, can be applied to this plan if we approve it as is tonight? What is that process?
Well, the, so these future land use categories are not the zoning districts. So the, the HDR land use category, I would say that the urban high-density zoning district would be consistent with the high-density residential land use category. So if a developer were to come in and make an application and, and want to put, you know, want to zone this, the high-density urban, that would fit within the HDR land use category.
Okay. Okay. Any other question, comments? Okay, thank you very much. So let's do roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.'s absent. Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jetzer?
Aye.
Alder Ladase?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Ragsden?
Aye.
Alder Vafadari?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
I felt that.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, so now Gabriela, where we at?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. Hang on just one moment. I'll move approval of resolution R 16525, approving certified survey map request CS 261225 by Randall Hess to divide one existing lot into two lots on property associated with 2640 Osmondson Road.
Second.
Plan Commission did pass this. This is relatively simple. This is a current duplex. It exists already. This is a subdivision so that it can be turned and basically to a zero-lot line twin home so that they can be sold as separate owner-occupied homes. Right now, it's owned by one person. And this is allowed. They meet all the requirements for a zero-lot line, except for maybe a couple that will be worked through with public works. But it'll be two owner-occupied units. Right now, it's just one. So.
Okay. Any question, comments? Okay. All those in favor of resolution R dash 165 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
And your votes, motion carried. Next one.
I'll move approval of resolution R 16625, approving final plat request FP 261125 by Michelle Burse, agent for Fitchburg Lands LLC, to approve a final plat for the fifth addition to Terre Vessa to allow the subdivision of 59 lots, including 50 buildable lots in the Terre Vessa neighborhood.
Second.
This Plan Commission did approve. This is the final addition to Terre Vessa. Finally have made it to this point. Lacy will be extended and will connect to Meadowwood Drive. There are going to be 50 buildable lots. The other nine lots is one outlot for future development that could be split, obviously, into multiple buildable lots. And then there's a remaining outlots for Stormwater and Alley, Environmental Corridor, et cetera. They, yeah, and, and that land is set aside for future development. Possibly that could be like a development that would be like Harlan Hills or big homes, kind of like in a, could potentially be something like that, but there's still some uncertainty there. The timeline is somewhat unknown. And I'm not sure, do we know how many total units?
Under smart code, it certainly could be. Built with some duplexes on these single, they're, they're designed as single-family homes.
Okay.
Lots right now. So they're designed as 50s, single-family homes.
Can you show the map there? Oh, no, you have access. Oh, he took the computer. Okay.
Yeah, it's on, I think it's on the, in the packet. But yeah, that's, that's all. That's the report.
Any question, comments? So I want to make a comment here because we heard that people say that the only thing that we are building is apartment. This is, you know, we are also building new subdivision. We are expanding. So that one is, you know, we are bringing more single-family owner-occupied. So, you know, so I want to make that comment. Yeah, Logan?
You can time me. I will stick to 30 seconds and no more. I sent Deanna a couple of notes with some concerns I had. Just want to thank her and the applicant for addressing them. The big one that I've heard from a lot of folks in Terre Vessa is just the amount of median landscaping that makes it hard to see at some of the intersections. And it sounds like from the applicant here that there, we are now requiring more pavement at the intersections to help address some of the visibility challenges, striking that balance between the, kind of the natural theme of the neighborhood and the visibility concerns that affect drivers, pedestrians, bicyclists, everybody. So just wanted to express some gratitude and let folks know again that your voices have been heard.
Nicely done, Logan. The mayor passed it to me. Anyone else commenting on this? Seeing none, we can vote. All in favor of resolution R 16625, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Councilor President, could I suggest a five-minute break? I sense that everyone is a little weary here.
Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
All in favor of a five-minute break, say aye.
Aye.
We will reconvene at 9:00 PM. Thank you.
Second? Yeah, we can move forward.
I move to reconvene into open session. Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then, Mayor, I just have a couple more things from my Plan Commission report.
Yes.
We did a conditional use and an architectural design review for the juvenile correction facility. This is land that's in the south of Fitchburg that's owned by the Department of Corrections. It's going to be a facility for 32 male and eight female juveniles. They have a nice design overall. They arranged the driveway so that they left as much agricultural land as possible. So it's kind of like curves around. They, it's designed to look like a school, so it very much looks like a school. Obviously, there's some fencing as well. They did some, they're going to do some tree buffers along the highway to, you know, for beauty and then also to like dampen the sound. And then they have outdoor recreation areas, a garden, an orchard, chicken coop, greenhouse. So there'll be some interesting things for the, for the young people that are there. That both passed the Plan Commission. We also had a long discussion about a proposal that Thermo Fisher is putting forward for adding basically fill from construction sites, basically dirt, to this land. It's like the strip off of McKee Road near Spoke Drive, but like on the other side of the bike path. Parallel to where the new YMCA is going to go in, but on the other side of the bike path. And we had a long discussion about it, but they're going to have to come back with some more things because talk about maybe doing more of a buffer between the homes there and then also the timeline. So, and also do a tree survey. So that will be coming back to Plan Commission in October. And that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question.
For the juvenile facility?
Yes.
When I initially saw something on the news about this and I saw a social media post, I think there was some misunderstanding about the jurisdictional authority related to it. So I don't know if either Mayor, Chad, you would like to just talk about the fact that this is Department of Corrections and not like a city decision? If, if that would just clarify that for the public?
Yeah, sure. I've seen similar information come out, or maybe it isn't completely clear. I mean, even seen some reference to even Dane County having some involvement in it. But this is strictly a Department of Corrections project utilizing land that the Department of Corrections already owns in southeast Fitchburg. And this project is a juvenile corrections facility. I think, if I recall correctly, approximately 40 beds for male and maybe roughly 20.
Oh, no, 32 male, eight female.
Okay, so 40 in total. But it is part of the overall strategy of the Department of Corrections to close two existing facilities and have more regional facilities in Milwaukee Metro, Madison Metro, and I believe one or two others in northwest, northeast Wisconsin so that juveniles who are in custody of the state are closer to their families.
And I just want to like emphasize that point because I remember years ago when that discussion was made at the state level to do that. I'm not a huge fan of locking up young people. And I, and I think there was a narrative online that I saw, which was like, "Fitchburg is building more prisons." And I was like, "That's not what's happening here. We need to approach these conversations." You know, redirecting those facilities closer to home is different than building a new prison. Also, my understanding is like we have Grow Academy, you know, which is already where young people are in Fitchburg proper. And I believe people from the Grow Academy, which is like a, I guess the best way to describe it, rehabilitation program, is not, many of those youth will be going from there to this new facility, correct?
I don't know exactly what they have planned. I think if the Grow Academy, if the DOC intends to continue it or not, if they do, my understanding previously is it's kind of like the last stop, so to speak, in the Department of Corrections system before youth would be placed back into the community with their family or their guardian or so forth. So I, if DOC is intending to operate that, I could see certainly some interplay between the two facilities where maybe somebody is coming from the new facility to the Grow Academy as kind of that next step into being placed back into the community with, with a parent.
Thanks for bringing that up, Alder Maldonado. That was actually the most important point that I missed is that they're closer to their families when they're in this, in this space.
Okay. So next we move to Board of Public Works.
I'd like to move approval of resolution R 13225 approving the purchase of a 2026 plow truck chassis.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
This will be replacing a 2008 plow truck and our scheduled, our scheduled equipment replacement. This is just the chassis. It does not include the accessories, the plow and other, other things. I believe we have, still have another one on order. Tim can chime, chime in. I think we're still waiting on one from last year that's still on order. Maybe Chad remembers.
Okay, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, we're actually waiting on three of them right now. So this would be a fourth one that we'd be waiting for.
Okay.
I would add, we asked the question, what could we do with less plow trucks? We're not seeing as many snow events. And Tim replied, that may be true, but we are seeing far more ice events where we have to, not necessarily plowing, but we have to be salting and sanding and actually the ice is probably a bigger safety hazard than the, you know, the snow event, so. And we still need trucks, I guess is the point I'm trying to make.
It's also the case that when we do get a snow event, we need all those trucks in order to clear the roads fast enough.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other question, Logan?
Tim, how long are we waiting on these? Is this like a year, a two-year backlog?
Yeah, it's about two, two to three years. It's gotten a little better, but we're still a couple of years out on this. Like right now, we're, the three chassis we have on order are done. We're just waiting for the equipment manufacturer, which is Monroe, to make the plow box and hydraulics in the wing for it to install on the three we have already.
Any other question? All those in favor of resolution R dash 132 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Next one.
I move approval of resolution R 16225 approving relocation order and TPP related to reconstruction of Fitchrona Road from Tonto Trail to Nesbit Road.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
TTC?
I believe TTC approved. I'll go double check. I'm getting a thumbs up from Chad.
Plan Commission approved and finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
We will acquire additional right of way for installing the road, the road improvements, the roundabout, and this is giving us the approval to start that process.
Okay.
I also add some questions of Tim about the MOU with the Town of Verona out of curiosity at finance. So this is, part of this is going to be Town of Verona land, so just wanted to clarify about that. The residents are aware from earlier meetings and they are in, at Public Works' meeting with the town. The road basically is down the middle on, between Fitchburg and Town of Verona. With the Town of Verona, they are paying 7% of the design costs for this. And then in regards to the construction costs, they are paying significantly less than we are, mainly because they would not opt to do curb and gutter and the bike infrastructure and those types of things if they were to redesign the road. And obviously, we want that as our, in our city, so we are paying for the bulk of it. I believe that the current MOU draft is somewhere around $400,000 of contribution in that regard, but I, Tim said that we should be seeing an MOU soon. They are also paying a prorated, prorated pay for the stormwater and then a prorated cost of the typical section that they would construct is kind of what that breaks down to. But we did receive a $2.7 million Department of Transportation grant for this.
Okay, I have a question. So practically, we are going to do gutter and, what is the other one? Curve in both sides? Even in the Town of Verona that they are not going to pay for that? So we are being a good neighbor.
Well, yeah, I understand your question.
I'm being sarcastic.
Kicking the cable. What I, what I would say is the, you know, not putting the curb and gutter, it, it, the road degrades.
No, I know.
You know, Tim could probably give you a breakdown on that, but.
But I have a question about the bike lanes. Are we doing that? No, isn't it? Because if they are not, this was my understanding when we were going through the CIP, isn't it? If they are not okay with it? Is this one?
There will be bike lanes on this section. It's a, bike lanes on both sides of the road. They're four feet wide with a two-foot buffer on both, both sides. And then a multi-use path on the east side of the road north of Lacy.
Okay, sorry, I, it, I am, okay. Chad told me that I am, it was, it's a brown part of the Fitchrona Road. Yeah.
Yeah, that project's south of here.
Okay, 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 okay. That's it.
Could I, could I ask you a quick question? A while ago, I believe in this stretch of road, I had a constituent call and ask about somebody tearing up the yard. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. So I guess a general question, when things like that are happening and like, does this require us to go into any part of private property? And if so, how are neighbors and landowners notified?
So as part of this transportation project plat, there's also TLEs, which are temporary limited easements. That's what will go into the property on a temporary basis typically to grate back to what's existing in their yard. And then as part of this process, we've had public involvement meetings and then the TLE, there'll be a cost associated with that. So we'd negotiate that with the property owner and they have been already made aware. Our title company has staked out the TLEs and then they have also met with the property owners just to kind of go over the areas that would be impacted.
What happened is the neighbors opposed to this.
If the neighbors are opposed with this, we do the eminent domain process and try to work through that. And then ultimately, if they, they choose not to do it, we'd have to go the condemnation route.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Okay. Any other question, comments? All those in favor of resolution R dash 162 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Next one.
Move approval of resolution R 16725 leasing a temporary sanitary sewer easement and a portion of a sanitary sewer and water main easement in Lot 115 of the first addition to Oak Meadow Plat.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Plan approved.
These, these temporary, temporary easement and water, water main and sewer were needed to construct the, construct the plat initially. And I believe it's been, it's been modified now so that this is not needed. Tim, does that sound right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Any other question, comments? All those in favor of resolution R dash 167 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries.
Mayor, I'd just like to add, Tim, Tim, I believe our, our street resurfacing and our street maintenance projects have both been completed. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, they have been completed. That is correct.
As Sayene Road opened, I thought it was this week, last Friday.
Yeah, Phase Two, which is from East Cheryl North to Clayton, that was open on Friday at 4:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it looks beautiful. I draw back the other way. Okay, okay. Okay, so next we move to Park Commission.
We haven't had anything since our last meeting except our friends at the park had our introductory meeting, signing the board, approving bylaws and kind of getting things kicked off. So I'll keep you posted as we move along.
Okay, thank you. Library Board.
Yes, I will start with our resolution. I would like to move approval of resolution R 16025 requesting exemption from county library tax.
Second.
The library board approved.
Finance approved.
So who is going to explain it? You or Wendy?
Yeah, we'll let the expert do it.
So this is something that we see every year, needing to exempt from the library tax. Before Fitchburg had a library, we paid the library tax back in 2010, I think was the last full year, and it was in the $900,000 range. I did reach out to the Dane County Library Service Director to see what it would be today, and it is about $1.5 million. So this is definitely something because we are maintaining our own library and funding our own library. We don't want to do both. So we do this every year. I wanted to come tonight just to kind of talk about Dane County library standards. We do this every so often, but it's been a while. Go ahead here. So the, so Dane County Library System, I guess, Services have standards that are based on statute 43. So these are things that we have to do to maintain library service. And it is very much based on population. There used to be more standards. We've made some changes over the past few years. These are the four that currently stand. So minimum hours annually open. We are at 3,280. The cap is at 300, 3,250, so we're fine there. That's not a number that changes year to year. Minimum public internet access workstation, so this harkens back to the days when people couldn't afford computers and didn't want to add them. We were very fortunate to open with many more than we needed. We have reduced the number a little bit in recent years because we're seeing so many people with their own devices. So that is capped at 25. We have 32. I don't anticipate going much further down than that, so we're fine there. The two that we are struggling or will be struggling with over the next couple of years, FTE pays to F per capita and annual material expenditures per capita. So this is a lot of numbers. This is how I'm tracking where we are with these standards. So if you look down the left, you'll see the population rate. I started this with just doing a thousand increase to see where we would be. Then I got some better numbers, I think, from the Planning and Zoning Department about where they're expecting us to be at certain benchmarks. So you'll see under the FTE, so, so the 2025 DOA estimate for 20, for 2025, obviously, puts us at needing 21.7 FTE. If you look to the right there, you'll see what our current breakdown is. So we're at 23.12, but that is not all paid staff. So we have 19.56 paid library staff. That includes full-time, part-time, LTE, even the summer outreach assistants that work for, you know, eight weeks for us. We get a credit for the admin fee. In case you're not familiar, this library does pay about $245,000 a year to the city for administrative fee. So we get a credit for that, which is fantastic. New this year, we are getting credit for the sorter. So we bought a new sorter two years ago. It was a significant investment, so I really pushed to get a credit for that and for the self-check machines. Not a whole lot of other libraries were interested in it, but they also didn't want to stand in the way of it. So we get 1.0 for the sorter and 2.5 for each self-check, and we have five. So you can see there, we're at 23.12 is our total, but as our population grows, we're going to have to grow the staff. I, I thought we would need to do it sooner than we do because of the sorter and the self-check, so I think we've got a two-year buffer here before we need to start adding staff, but at that point, we're not really going to have an option. The other one is material expenditures. So if you look at that, we've been, we started the library 2011. I think we had $174,000 for expenditures. That's for materials, both print and electronic. We've increased that over the years. We've been at 185,000 for the last probably three or four years, and we are going to have to start increasing that right now. So for the 2026 budget, I have us at 186,500. I will tell you, we are the second lowest per capita expenditure on materials in the county, which is not great. Madison Public is the only one that spends the less on materials than Fitchburg. So that's not fantastic. It has just been what we have been able to afford in our budget.
What are you saying? What are you talking about?
So we're talking about all the books that we buy, everything that we're checking out to Patreon. So books, DVDs, audio books, databases that we subscribe to for people to use, Libby if you're checking out eBooks or e-audio books, all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's going to have to continue to increase as well. Any?
A little troubled by, you know, the, based on the population, shouldn't it be on the usage? You know, the, the public's usage should drive the amount of FTEs, not the county saying your population is this, so you have to have this many.
I don't know that that would help us. Library use has gone down, especially since the pandemic.
Well, that's what I'm saying. They're telling, you know, they're telling you, you have to add more people. I, I think it should be based on your people you need. You know what it is based on your volume. And so then they're saying, all right, well, the city grew, you, you have to add some more. I, I'm just troubled by that, okay? Go, continue on.
Yep. That is how the system works.
You need to reach out to your Fitchburg Dane County supervisor.
I know him. I know one of them.
Complain there.
If you want more information, we did have the Dane County Library Service Director come to a library board meeting several months ago to kind of explain where this all comes from. It's been happening for much longer than we've been around as a library.
What is the biggest portion of the material expense? Is it physical books? Is it eBooks?
Physical.
It's physical still?
Buy, buy quite a lot. So we, for Libby, buy in with the whole state. So South Central library system has a portion based on usage, but we all share materials. We are now allowed to, just in the past, like probably five years. We have an advantage account, it's called, so South Central can put more money in and those items will go to South Central residents. We are very recently, in the last two years, been able to have a Fitchburg advantage account, so we can put money into that and it will go to Fitchburg residents first. It does feed into the bigger hold lists when ours are filled. But that is, that is a fairly small fraction. I would say probably $30,000 out of this.
I, I want to understand this number. So it means that we need to, every year we need to buy new material in the amount of $186,000 even if we don't need it?
You know what I mean?
We need, we need it. I mean, we're, we're definitely buying this anyway.
Okay, okay, okay.
Like this is why we, this is what we're, what our business is.
So you need to buy continually new books and, you know?
Yes. Yes. We spend this every year without a problem and frankly could spend probably five times this if we had it. I will also say with the, with the way the economy is right now, like the, the price of books is going up. The quality is going down. Like we're, we're buying less copies of things than we would like to be.
Okay.
eBooks even more so. Like they're super expensive. They come with a lot of different lending models for digital rights management, so you can buy a book.
eBooks are more expensive?
Hmm?
eBooks are becoming more expensive?
Yeah, they're very expensive. E-audio books are horribly expensive and they come with rules like you can check it out 52 times and then it disappears. You can check it out like 52 times in a row, or you can check it out 52 times at one time and then it disappears and you have to buy another copy. The publishing industry is crazy. Yeah.
We should buy more graphic novels.
If my eight-year-old got a vote, that would be hers.
We hear that a lot, and we do buy a lot of them. They fall apart when you sneeze on them.
Well, you all have a great assortment, so I appreciate that you're always refreshing it.
Absolutely. And that is real reading, in case anybody is doubting it.
We have another question, Wendy.
Yeah, I just wanted to also drive home, Wendy. First of all, this is kind of rehashing what we talked about at the Library Board on June 18th. If anyone wants to go back and watch that presentation from the Dane County Library Service about that reimbursement formula. What happens, Wendy? Could you just explain for folks about if we miss our target one year? Or we immediately slap it on the wrist and sense...
If we miss it, and we did miss it one or two years when we first opened, there used to be a number here that was the total number of physical items you own. And we obviously couldn't meet that for our population when we opened, and so we missed it a couple of years. We have to write a letter of reparation, like, how you're going to fix it. If you miss it three years out of 10, then you're paying the tax. So you can miss it. I would, in the words of Misty Dodge, say that if you're missing it, you're creating a structural deficit because you're going to have to increase more to make it up as the population goes up. If that makes sense. You can see here at the bottom, these are capped, so the FTE is capped at 25. We won't hit that for a while. And then the materials expenditure is capped at 240,000, which is kind of a good indicator of what other libraries are spending. It's quite a bit more than we are. There's also minimum appropriation. I hate to even bring this up because it makes it look like you can reduce the library budget when in fact, we could not run the library for what this minimum appropriation is. But just in the, in the sense of giving you all the information, the minimum appropriation that has to be spent is $2,049,000. And that's based on equalized value. The other thing that is kind of a challenge for us, that is not directly related to the standards, but just, we should talk about since I'm here, is cross-municipal and cross-tauntship payments. So Dane County gets money from the state for library service and disseminates it among Dane County libraries. It's based on cross-municipal and cross-tauntship payments. So if you live in Pittsburgh and you go check out a book at Verona, there is a dollar amount associated with that that we have to pay Verona for providing that service to you, and vice versa, and that goes between all of the different libraries. It also includes people that live in the county that don't have a library. So if you're not in a municipality or a village with a library, then you're a county resident, and county pays us for that checkout. So this is kind of the kicker. In 2024, Pittsburgh residents checked out 36,000 items from Verona, and Verona residents checked out 3,000 items at Pittsburgh. Real disconnect there. That is not the only, you know, it goes back and forth between everybody. We make, we get quite a bit of use from Madison residents, so that kind of helps us. But if you look at this payment in the contract that we have, we paid into the formula, which was expected because we were brand-new, and people needed to learn to come to Pittsburgh. We flipped over and had a big party about it in 2017 because we started to receive money instead of pay money. That was fantastic. Things went really well until the pandemic. This is based on a three-year average, and because of the pandemic, we didn't ever count 2020 or 2021. So we were holding on to previous years in the formula so that nobody would get too badly punished by the pandemic. So what we're looking at for 2026 has gone down significantly. Part of that is because 2019 numbers came out of the formula, and now we're just looking at 22, 23, 24. Circulation has never fully recovered from the pandemic. People have learned to do things online. That doesn't count in the formula. But also, Town of Madison took three full years to affect us in this formula. So those patrons were checking out with us. We were getting paid for that checkout. We no longer do that. So all of that combined together, and we took a real significant hit for a couple of years in a row now. We think that this has evened out and that we shouldn't see another big drop like this, but I'm not going to be comfortable until I see the contract come through year to year, for sure. I don't think it's good to depend on this money because it is so variable. You know, there have been libraries that have been in real big trouble because all of a sudden, the money that they were expecting from this payment didn't come through. And if it's, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, which it is for some libraries, then you're in a real spot, so.
So do you know why, you know, in '24, Pittsburgh residents check? So much item in Verona, you know, what is it?
I think the school district is a big factor. And I'll say that I didn't realize when I came to Wisconsin that that was going to be insurmountable, but it feels like it is. I think they do a lot of automatic signup for everybody in the Verona School District to get a library card, and I think that they take them to Verona. I think, I think that it's, it's just real hard to overcome that. We reach out to the schools as well, but, but we have three school districts, so we can't do all of it. So that's hard. Yeah, we are looking at, in our strategic plan, doing some kind of a marketing campaign to... Every time I tell people about the cross-municipal, cross-tauntship, like, if you go check out somewhere else, we're paying for it, like, people are just floored by it. But I've been saying it for 15 years now, so like, I don't know how to get that word out. So that's something we're going to work on with our strategic plan.
Does, can I clarify? It's the physical location that you check out. So when someone puts something on hold at Pittsburgh, we get credit for that because it's checked out at Pittsburgh. It doesn't matter who owns the material.
Yes. So every account, we know your address, that's going to be who gets, right, who gets credit. You can make your home library, you can change your home library, and that's where your holds automatically go. That doesn't, that doesn't necessarily matter, but it's where you're checking out.
Okay. I have told, since I learned this from you, I told my daughter this. She's been very diligent about putting books on hold and not checking them out at Verona, so.
Thank you.
You have one person.
That's great. If everyone could do that, that'd be great.
36,000 to go.
Yeah, going back to your comment about, like, school districts, has there been an actual formal conversation with, like, the ASD, for example, to say, if you're going to do this promotion and you are in a school that's in Pittsburgh, like Savannah Oaks or Stoner Prairie, that you, the school formally directs them towards the Pittsburgh Public Library?
There hasn't, and we can try that. I think Verona is, libraries don't like to compete, but, but there is a lot of money at stake here. Verona makes a lot of money out of this formula, so they'll be right in there, right next to us, probably saying the opposite.
We should have a campaign.
Why, what I'm saying, that may be a conversation worth, like, having with the school board or the superintendent directly to say that this is the impact. Our schools, your schools are in our city. Can we prioritize at least at those two schools for that to be the effort?
I think for sure we can do more with, like, having school visits and that kind of thing. And I think that will come out of the strategic plan. And I think we just need to have kind of an awareness campaign of, like, what happens when you're checking out somewhere else and prioritizing coming to Pittsburgh.
I think it's likely more District One residents because the Verona library is closer to them than, than coming over here. And then if they're running down, you know, if they're, they're going down, if their kids are in the schools down there, they're likely going back and forth, so it's easier. I think it's a geography thing.
We're also trying to do projects in the building, so we just finished a second-floor redesign where we're trying to make the space more usable, more friendly, more like study spaces instead of that technology center that we had. And next year, we're looking at doing some improvements to the children's department to make it more of kind of a destination. I think, I think youth programming is huge, and we get really good numbers, but I think you can always do better. And people in Dane County, I mean, they're super lucky. They get to use all the libraries, and they're all great in different ways. So like, I've never wanted to discourage that, except that now I kind of do. Yeah. That's all the information I had. Do you have more questions?
So the 36,000 versus 3,000, I presume that is holding steady over the years? Or has that varied quite a bit?
It's moving in our favor a little bit.
Okay.
A little bit, not.
12 to 1 is starting to move in our favor.
Yep.
Okay, so did you move this resolution? Who did, oh, Logan?
I moved it, yes.
So any other question, comments for this?
Can I just put one bow on this conversation we just had? And I'm just hoping yes, no, Wendy. The, if we look at the 2026 operating budget that was just released, for folks who say, you know, could we just cut the library budget or cut our hours, this, that, or the other? If we cut too much hypothetically, and I'm not proposing this, so please don't come at me. But if we were to cut too much, we could end up having to pay both the current and we'd have to add the library tax on top of that. So we'd have to double pay.
So residents would be double paying.
Okay. So definitely don't do that.
That would be terrible.
Yes.
I think it would be nice that maybe you can write an article for the Pittsburgh Star about explaining this and promoting people to, you know. So, okay, thank you, Wendy, for this.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R. 160-25, say aye. Aye. Any polls, emotions, care? Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, I just have a couple of quick updates from September 17th Library Board meeting. Our utilities continue to be overspent. It seems like we're moving in the right direction, but still having some just under-budgeting for utilities there. Expected budget amendment coming this fall, using money from interest income to kind of backfill that gap. As Wendy mentioned, work is essentially done on the second-floor remodel with the computer lab being replaced with a living room area for studying and reading, and it looks fantastic if you haven't checked it out yet. The request for proposals for the Children's Library renovation project that Wendy also just mentioned is still being worked on, hopefully out by the end of Sept- or hopefully out by the end of September and then a month or so of that. And then we also moved into closed session to discuss our evaluation of Wendy, as we do every year. And I won't spoil the surprise since Wendy's in the room.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, so.
Oh, I forgot one thing. I apologize. And I even hooked up my computer and everything. So the last thing that I wanted to mention was that the Friends of the Library would love some additional members. So if you want to sign up for that, all you have to do, I believe we're not showing up here. I'm getting a shrug emoji. Anyway, friendsoffitchburglibrary.com. There's a button in the upper left that says become a friend. Sign up there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next commission, I'm edging well. Oh, Logan and Donna, Donna is not here, so we move. Resource Conservation Commission.
Yes, we had the Fall Electronics Recycling and Paper Shredding Event on September 13th, and statistics on the total amount that we collected are forthcoming. Other than that, we have not met, so I will talk to you after our October 13th meeting.
Okay, thank you. And good article in the Pittsburgh Star.
Thank you.
Transportation and Transit Commission.
We met last on September 11th, primarily discussing the resolution that we already discussed through Public Works. Also, the Route B and Route 65 extensions to Triverton Pike at McKee Road, which the funding for that is included in the mayor's proposed 2026 budget. Couple of things to note with that. Due to some cost, the most likely at this stage outcome for the Route B stations has moved from center-running to side-running. So there would be more stations that would be required, but they'd be smaller, and it would also require less rebuilding of Fish Hatchery Road, which we just did a couple of years ago, but the median's not wide enough for the center-running, so.
Oh, we're talking about the BRT?
Yes, the BRT for a few years from now. And then we also discussed some of the timing of when we could see some of these bus improvements to expand 65 and 75 to all-day service. Based on the conversations with Metro, it sounds like at this point, the earliest, unfortunately, would probably be August of '26.
Okay.
That was the similar reaction that we had in the room.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Yeah.
What about the extension of the 75? You mentioned the B and 65, but not the 75.
Same packet, isn't it?
Yeah, it's all part of the same, same.
I didn't hear you mention 75 yet, so I was a little worried.
Correct. Yep, I'm just looking at the...
Can we talk to them to see if we can have this? You know, I know that...
Yeah, so in my conversations that I had when we were putting cost estimates and service levels together during the referendum, it was rather informative that there's a number of logistical considerations that go into play when Metro can make these particular changes. I know it's not ideal. I know Ross Kahler, our transportation engineer, has been engaged in conversations with them recently to get updated costs and so forth. I don't, I don't know as though we will have much ability to change that, and we can certainly ask again. But I think because of the fact that they've got to get the number of buses where they've got to get them, they've got to get the drivers where they've got to get them, the timing and so forth, that it's, it's not as easy as just saying, okay, Pittsburgh's paying more money for this level of service, and, you know, next month, we're going to be able to implement it, so. But I get, I get the disappointment.
And then last, we also discussed the still-in-draft transit plan update.
Okay, thank you. Community and Economic Development Authority.
We have not met since our last meeting. We meet this Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Ag and Rural Affairs Committee.
Our September meeting was canceled. We meet again on October 21st.
Oh, and I found, and I sent you something that I found the other day. Last night, it was this agricultural plan. So please, I don't know, it would be nice if you can discuss it in that committee and go to the action item to see where we are with that, because it was...
We have two more years to complete.
Yeah, and I was surprised, I forgot about the plan, but, you know.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it. Maybe we can put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission.
Our next meeting's October 1st. I think Bill's going to talk about the pick-me-up-at-the-border in his alder report. So that happened on Friday. Unfortunately, was not able to make it.
No? EMS Commission.
We met last week, yes, last week. And we went over some updates. We updated our conditions of employment. One of the pieces we looked at was if anyone on our staff loses their license, making sure that essentially both first responders in a rig have to be able, like, someone needs to be able to drive, and making sure that if your partner loses their license, like, you didn't sign up to be a concierge, you signed up to be an EMS and give help to people. And so making sure, how do we still support people if for some reason they lose their license without hindering someone else's ability to have hands-on care to people? And then we talked about also vaccines and updating those in terms of who has to get vaccinated and with what vaccines. And then we just got a rundown of budgets. One interesting line, some of our vendors have started including a tariff line in the things that we buy. So that's been interesting and terrible to see. Yep, not enjoying that. And the annual district meeting is October 16th at 7:00 PM here in Pittsburgh City.
Oh, yes, that one is a meeting that we should attend, isn't it? I recommend.
It seems like it's going to be a hoot, so definitely be here. Definitely.
What is, is October 16th?
Yes, ma'am, October 16th at 7:00 PM here in Council Chambers.
Yeah, okay.
Can we get a calendar invite for that?
Can we? Yeah, I have it in. Yeah, okay. That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. HNI, okay, Donna is not here. Housing Advisory Committee.
We are joining the SEDA meeting this Thursday, September 25th at 7:00 AM. And we, our next dedicated meeting is October 13.
Okay, thank you. Landmark.
Your report.
You need to do something, Logan, with this committee. Tree Advisory Committee.
I will say again, the open house for the Urban Forestry Management Plan is tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, so I'll stop by for 30 minutes before we have committee of the whole. Fall tree planting, we did 42 trees. We replaced the final ash trees in the parks. We're replacing them all with 14 different species, so that's good. There are 200 ash trees on city terraces left. And I said that potentially with proper staff and funding, that would take maybe about two years to remove those as well. And then we are partnering with Urban Tree Alliance to plant trees in late September, early October, 40, 50 of them along Traceway Drive and Maple Lawn Heights, so in the HNI neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. Can you send, you know, an invitation about those event?
Yes.
Okay. Donna is not here. Do you know that we need to have a sixth member for the Community and Equity? No?
I don't know yet.
No, okay. Okay, so now, next we move to standing committees and reports, and we start with Finance Committee.
I'll start with the report. Our director shared that the budget, obviously, was released on Friday, as the mayor told you. And just to read it one more time, there's going to be two special finance meetings next week. next week, Tuesday and Wednesday at 5:30 PM here in Council Chambers or online. Encourage the council to show up and ask questions about the budget, and also hear from the mayor directly about how she shaped this. They were hiring the Finance Department, and they, their new employees started yesterday, which is a pretty quick hiring process, which is great. We also got our Moody's report that just stated that we're continuing our AAA bond rating. It technically wasn't a bond rating update because we did not issue debt last year, but we still have that AAA bond rating, which is great. And then, I will move on to the resolutions. I'll move approval of Resolution R. 16425, approving police vehicle purchases.
Second.
As amended by Finance. Did we not, we didn't amend it in Finance?
As amended by staff.
Oh, as amended by, okay, sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
I move approval as amended by Finance, as passed by Finance.
Okay, who seconded this? Nicole, okay.
Finance Committee approved, the redlined version from staff basically was eliminating one of the two vehicles, because there's a separate resolution that we'll talk about in a minute about the other vehicle. This is be, as a result of the reorganization, and the cost for the cars was factored into the net neutral, you know, plan for that reorganization. This vehicle will be a lieutenant's vehicle. It's a little more expensive because it's off-cycle with the state contract, but they need it sooner than what would happen with that. So, this is going to be a squad-style car, but because it's a lieutenant's vehicle, there are fewer interior modifications than a typical squad car. It's $44,930 for the vehicle, and they anticipate about $8,000 of future items to fully outfit it.
Okay, any question, comment? All those in favor of Resolution R. 164-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next one is Personnel Committee. Oh, do you have anything else to, for final?
Nope.
Personnel has not met since our last council meeting.
Thank you. Public Safety and Human Services.
Just a couple of events coming up on the ZARs Promise Inspiration Walk. It's a, it's a walk for pet owners and feline and canine cancer. It's on October 12th in McKee Farms Park from 8:00 to 3:00. The Denali Celebration at the Hindu Temple is October 20th from 6:00 to 9:00, and they have fireworks at, at the end. And there's a very nice neighborhood event near Logan's, the nine-bark street block party where they close off part of the street, and they're having a Halloween party on the 25th from, I think, 3:00 till 10:00. So those were the events, events that we had.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next we move to item 10. We don't have anything unfinished business? Nope. And then to new business, and we have a couple of direct referrals.
Yes, I will move approval of Resolution R. 16825, approval for Engine 2 repairs.
Second.
These are unexpected, oh, Finance approved. These are unexpected repairs funded through staff vacancy savings for this one. There's also a second one that'll be coming up in a second, and I believe this total's $14,013. But that's all the information I have, and I'd love to hear from Chief Sarver about, more about the repairs if you want to share.
Unfortunately, we have exceeded our vehicle maintenance budget. Most of this stuff is not elective and unpredictable. So, both of these resolutions are for the transfer of funds to cover those costs of repairs that have already been completed. We're asking for the direct referral. We had a couple processing errors as far as getting the resolution in front of, in front of you. So yeah, it's just, we're having a rough year with rigs this year, and we're hoping for an uneventful rest of the year with vehicle maintenance. We do have some built-in costs that we're expecting to have to amend in the future as well, but hopefully no unexpected breakdowns.
Okay, any question, comment? Here none. All those in favor of Resolution R. 168-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
I move approval of Resolution R. 17025, approval for Engine 3 repairs.
Second.
This is the same as above. This one was $6,715, and it's funded through disability premium savings.
Hey, point of order, budget amendment was necessary? Did we need to do a?
No.
No? Okay.
Simple majority.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah.
Good question.
Okay. What is, that's it?
That's all.
Pretty much the same as before, so. We're doing our best, taking care of them, and working on some alternative strategies for the future as far as deployment, so.
Thanks for making sure the fire trucks work.
Yeah, and they have to. And, you know, it's tough when you, you don't have that crystal ball, right? And it's tough.
Did you chuckle at the three-year lead time for the snowplows, based on your?
No, I was happy somebody else is experiencing the same pain as we are. Yeah. But yeah, it's interesting on where that will go. We'll see, so.
Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R. 170-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
I move approval of Resolution R. 17525. Thanks, Chief. I move approval of Resolution R. 17525, authorizing purchase of police department electric vehicle.
Second.
This is for the social worker that's going to full-time in the police department. The mayor directed to them to find, to work on this being an electric vehicle, since it's not a squad car, and it can be an electric vehicle. They are still working on procuring a vehicle, but they, this is an authorization to spend $42,000 on the vehicle. If, as long as the vehicle is that much or less, they will go forward with it. If it happens to be more, they would have to come back to council. It's $15,000 more than was budgeted, but we are paying for that overage with the hybrid electric vehicle fund. And for those of you that are new, that's something that I put forward in the budget amendment in 2020 to direct save gasoline savings towards a hybrid electric vehicle fund. And we haven't had to draw on it as much as I wanted, because, it's not wanted, but as much as we, I thought we would need to, because a lot of electric vehicles are at parity with a gas-powered vehicle nowadays. But anyway, that's why it exists, and that's why we're using it. We do get federal rebates for electric vehicles, FYI, and that money is coming in, and it's going into the hybrid electric vehicle fund for future purchases, but that expires at the end of the month, and the police department does not anticipate being able to secure a vehicle in time for that. That's all.
Okay, any question, comments? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R. 175-25, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, can I make a motion to extend the meeting by 30 minutes?
Second.
That was what I was going to mention.
Okay. How many?
I wanted to be the first, by 30 minutes.
Okay.
I don't think we'll need it.
Okay, all those in favor to move, no, to extend the meeting 30 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are extending the meeting to 10:30.
What would the goal to finish?
May I ask who seconded that, please?
Yeah, you choose. Okay, so next we move into Alder Report, and I will start with District 1.
Just two things, reminder, residents, keep the storm, storm grates clean on the street. If your house has, has one, the leaves are starting to go there. And the other thing, we had a very nice, LA Duns Marsh Neighborhood Association had a great community meal on Friday, not, not this Friday, but the previous one, you know, we had good, good attendance and a lot of, you know, a lot of, it's nice to see these, these people and their families, is, I guess is why I'd say, and thank you, some of this money comes from the healthy, for this comes from the Healthy Neighborhood Association.
Okay, thank you.
No updates, just rest in peace, Alex Velazquez.
Who?
My brother.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Joel.
Okay.
District 2.
Two, yes.
So last Friday, September 19th, was the Bike Fitchburg Pick Me Up at the Border Ride. We had about 48 registrations and 40 people who actually showed up to ride.
Oh, really? Whoa.
Yeah, it was also interesting that the, so there's a $15 registration fee, and then you can donate on top of that. And the donations actually were just a hair higher than the actual $15 registration fee. So people are, people are giving to Bike Fitchburg, which is excellent. I had planned on going to the border, but the people I were, I was riding with were 84 and 76 years old, and they didn't want to go that far. So, we wound up turning around at Monticello, so it was still, I went halfway, it was about 40 miles.
Whoa.
There was a lot of rain that was threatening, but very little rain that actually fell, and plenty of lightning off in the distance for quite some time, but it never really moved in, so.
Need your lights.
I'll put in another reminder that Monday, September 29th through Sunday, October 5th is a week without driving, so to, to not get behind the wheel for the entire week. This Saturday at the Dane County Farmers Market, we'll have, or the MPO will have a table set up, giving out information about the, the week without driving. And there will be a series of three community discussions. First one being in Madison on Sunday, the 28th, 3:30 to 5:00 PM. Another one in Sun Prairie, Tuesday, the 30th. We'll all be here in Council Chambers, talking about budget instead. And then on Thursday, in Fitchburg at Terrace Point in the, in the club room, and I will be moderating that. So that Thursday, October 2nd, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM.
Can you send an invite to that, so we can put it in our calendar?
Yes.
Please, because, yeah.
We will also be having a Week Without Driving Media Event, Monday morning, September 29th, same as last year, so mayors, alders, interested parties from, you know, NGOs will be there to recognize the week without driving. And I'm going to nudge Logan and his Landmark Preservation Commission to potentially having some sort of a meeting, or at least a little bit of involvement. This Friday, I will be meeting with Andy Potts of the Bike and Pet Commission, and Ryan Hutter of the Resource Conservation Commission to discuss getting bike tours of Fitchburg and/or walking tours, and, you know, making a tour. We'll, we'll start and finish at all the bicycle-friendly businesses, and we'll hit up all the landmarks in the, in the city, maybe all the pieces of art, all of the historic trees, just kind of highlight, you know, parts of Fitchburg, and bring in a connection with some of the other committees and commissions.
Oh, this is great.
Happy to be a part of that conversation. My Friday looks clearer in the afternoon.
Oh, 7:15 AM at the Rolling Pin Bakery.
We'll chat offline.
I attended the opening of the Juniper, which was, it was beautiful, really beautiful. So, really great developer that's doing a lot of great things in Fitchburg, and happy that they're continuing to bring new projects to us, because they, they definitely deliver a good product. And just another plug for the Week Without Driving, I'm unfortunately not going to be in town for the one this year, but I'm going to.
But I'm going to be diving.
Yeah, I'm going to be, I'm going to be doing something pretty, yeah. I won't be driving that week at all. I'll be, I'll be diving, yes, so I won't be driving. But the, I am going to try to do it the week of October 13th, because it was a really great experience last year, and I encourage anyone that hasn't done it, I know some of the, some of the alders here do this regularly, so it's not a deviation, but for those of you that it is deviation, it's a great thing to try. I, when I first few years I lived in Fitchburg, I didn't have a car, so I was transit, but I was, I was going downtown Madison, which was a little bit easier than my new role, which I, I'm on the west side, so it was a whole new adventure, and I am not very, got lost a lot, but it was a good experience, and it taught me how to use the bus service, so I can, I could use it whenever I want, and I encourage people to check it out, especially elected officials making those decisions. Thanks.
Fun fact, I did it last year, and I saw Jim Wheeler on the bus, so.
Yeah.
You never know.
Okay, so more District 2, because I am still part of District 2, I forgot to mention this, so Leopole School is celebrating the Hispanic Heritage Month this Saturday. They invite us, I forward to you guys, but everyone can come. It's from 11:00 to 1:00 PM. So I, I attended last year, it's a great event. The other thing is, I am also meeting with someone from the Hispanic community here in Fitchburg, that they want to do Celebridad de los Muertos in Te Batillos. So that one is an event that she want to, she, she reached out the owner, because she want to see how the city, we can do this event together, so I'm going to find out more about Saturday, but I think that one is going to be super neat. Okay, so, okay, District 3.
All right, most of the updates I have, have been mentioned, so I will breeze through them. As Mayor Roda Frado mentioned, she and I met with Oregon School Superintendent Dr. Bergstrom, and I'm drawing a blank on a name right now, another representative from the Oregon Schools to talk about some transportation issues and other collaborative, potential collaborations in the Forest Edge, Taravessa area. Was nice to see so many folks at the shredding recycling event. Was able to go to the juniper ribbon cutting, and I just saw on LinkedIn today that they have broken ground on the Rowan, which is the sister apartment building right next door. 210 luxury units in that, and that's the second of three buildings, kind of in that inner, like horseshoe circle within Hartung Fields. Was also able to go to breakfast event with the Madison Reading Project. Let's see, I have a couple of opportunities to connect here in the next few weeks. Alder Dancler and I will be having a community conversation October 4th at the Limerick Apartments. We had hoped to have one in Taravessa a few days ago, had to reschedule due to some scheduling constraints, so stay tuned for that, but we will get it on the calendar as soon as we can. Also wanted to quickly mention that outside of Fitchburg, but still a big impact for a lot of folks on the eastern side of the city, in Madison, the John Nolan Drive Construction Project will begin next month. There were several hundred folks on a virtual meeting last night, and I was able to share a little bit from the Fitchburg perspective in that, that arena last night. I did ask and did not get a great answer about what that could mean for my fellow Route 65 commuters. So hopefully, the impacts are minimal, but there will still be one lane in each direction, so the bus will at least still be able to get through, but I have not heard anything about any sort of rerouting or detours at this time.
I will shout out again the District 4 Listening Session this Thursday, the 25th, 6:00 PM, Black Hawk Church. The Oak Bank Pumpkin Giveaway is October 4th at 9:00 AM. It's the same time as the Fire Department Open House, which is right across the street, so that was really great last year when both those were going at the same time. That's a great event. Your kids can usually meet Bucky and Scooby, so that's either great or terrifying, depending on your child. And this is in Verona, but it's the school district. The Verona Homecoming Parade is October 3rd at 4:00. So a lot of Fitchburg kids go to Verona schools, that's always a good event. They, high school kids throw candy, and I'm pro throwing candy at children, so. Yeah, so that's all I have. Nicole doesn't have anything, so we can be done.
Don't you speak for me, sir. I do have some things, and get comfy, I'm just kidding, it's not going to take that long, but I am going to take the time to read this statement I prepared. So, "After much reflection, I have made the difficult decision to resign from my position as Alder for District 4 in the City of Fitchburg effective October 1st. With two young children at home, this is a season of life where my focus must be on my family. It's been an incredible honor to serve our community, both on City Council and on the Verona School Board as the Fitchburg voice. My goal has always been to ensure Fitchburg grows equitably with fiscal responsibility, preserving what we love about this great city by establishing growth that respects our neighbors and the beautiful land that we love. I sought to advocate for children and families, ensuring that new playgrounds are built with accessibility in the forefront, so that kiddos like my niece can join in on the fun even from a wheelchair. Ensuring that new housing addresses not just single units, but also multiple-bedroom dwellings across all income levels, making space for families. I worked hard to pass a $19 million referendum for our Verona schools, funding teachers and staff to ensure children have access to the talented people they deserve. As the board clerk, I had the honor of penning the final signature on the Lacy Farm purchase, which will be a future site for a VASD high school here in Fitchburg. As a summer credit union, Summit Credit Union Female Entrepreneur Fellow, and now a successful small business owner, I've worked to highlight Fitchburg's role as an economic engine for Dane County while ensuring that the taxpayer dollars are spent wisely. My company employs a Fitchburg business, and has sponsored another nonprofit in our broader community, Madison Reading Project, hoping to support businesses to make their home here. As the owner of my own financial P&amp;L, I understand what budgets and spending mean on a very personal level. That's why I'm so proud of people like our arborist, Anna, who writes for grants until her hand cramps, to try and receive. who writes for grants until her hand cramps to try and receive federally available funding for trees. It's why I'm so proud of the police station project that came back on scope and $10 million under budget, which never happens. It's why I'm so impressed with that same police department who, after a failed community referendum, got savvy and put together a department staffing model that helps our community and the whole person well-being of our officers while staying within budget. Lastly, it's been an honor to listen to and advocate for our rural and agricultural communities. As stated before, America has left the independent farmer behind. I am proud that our community is one who can step outside themselves to try and see somebody else's life and struggle differently than their own. And the majority of the farming community has afforded me the opportunity to understand, to ask questions, to be curious, and to help pass zoning changes that allow people to stay on their family's land. But at the end of the day, all of those reasons are not enough to shadow the reason I do all of this, my beautiful family. My son was in a stroller while I knocked doors during my maternity leave to run for school board, super fun mat leave. My daughter came with me the first time I voted for myself. I discreetly used a hand breast pump while onstage at a board meeting as to not miss an important vote. My son was even at the last board meeting giving the hilariously timed chuckle as he watched his tablet and colored. It has reached the point that my children need me more than they did before. At this point, in addition to being a mom, I can only have one other job, not two. To my fellow Alders, I have been so honored to serve with you all. Dave, we've disagreed on a lot of things, but two things are crystal clear to me. One, few people understand public works like you do, and I appreciate every single detail you share about it. And two, if I was your neighbor and I broke my leg, you'd be the type of guy to shovel my driveway. You love our community and you love your neighbors. Joe, you and I brought a resolution that elicited strong public feedback, even one call from a local business owner threatening to spend his days ruining us politically. But as I continue to watch the ongoing US-funded genocide in Gaza, I could not be more proud to have brought this resolution with you. You are a fierce advocate who never backs down from what's right, a trait clearly carried through in your beautiful, sassy daughter. I am so honored to have served with you. Bill, I don't know what I love more, your dad jokes or your love of the environment. You and I brought a resolution challenging the federal government to stop jerking around our taxpayer dollars, which support important initiatives in this city. You're always thinking about the future and trying to base all of your observations and data. Delivering them with a laugh or a pun is just the icing on the cake. Gabriella, my daughter asks to go to your house at least once a quarter and wonders aloud who her favorite person on council is. Is it Gabriella or the mayor? I'm not in the running. But the jealousy never builds, because I too think you're the coolest. And I think my kids see in you what I do, your willingness to be open and listen. Your hunger for information is voracious, fueling your quest to make the most informed decision. You always have a smile on your face, and I'm inspired by your love of service. Logan and Micah, having you both on council now makes this resignation both easier and more annoying, because I want more time to serve with you, to see your passion and insights unfold. But it's mostly positive because I can watch that magic on Fact TV. Thank you both for the time you spend in the community, making sure you hear and understand as much as possible. Your energy for Fitchburg is infectious, and unlike the 1 million things my kids bring home that are infectious, this is a bug I hope everybody catches. Donald, from hearing a data-driven presentation from you while I was on the school board to running alongside you for council, I've been proud to have your voice at the table. Not always so jazzed about standing next to you in photos, though, where no matter how snappily I dress, I can never compete. But your service on the Commission of Aging Well is drenched in true passion, and transition of ad hoc to now permanent equity committee has been a joy to watch. And Julia, I don't know what to say. The amount of time you spend on this city is staggering. The commitment to your neighbors is unparalleled. The retention of city statistics, development plans, and dates is kind of freakish. But every time you're here, you bring your whole self to this job. There is never a moment you phone it in. You never half-ass anything. You full culo everything. And just as fierce as you advocate for people, you fiercely support your teams, and I'm so happy to have your voice here. Happy that Fitchburg is a team headed by the most fierce coach. I could talk for more hours about the amazing city staff and the phenomenal civilian constituents, but since that would require four more hours, I'll end with this. This decision was not made lightly, but I know Fitchburg will continue to thrive because of the dedicated residents, leaders, and partners who call the city home. I remain deeply grateful for the trust my neighbors have placed in me and for the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Make me cry. So we are going to miss you, and I understand, you know. I fully support your decision, and I wish you the best. And when you're ready, way back, you know, you should come back. You know, the city deserves a person like you. You know, when I ran, my first time, my kid were in high school. I understand as a mom, you know, that this time is pressure with your kid. So I, you know, so I fully support you and I wish you the best. Don't be a strange person to us, and, you know.
I will not be a stranger. My daughter already chastised me for quitting because she asked when she would be able to come back to City Hall to hang out with Julia and Gabriella. We will not be strangers.
We're doing a double date of bringing Nia.
But yeah, so we wish you the best, and, you know, and, you know, we are here. Okay, so. Okay, so the other thing I forgot to mention, on October 3rd is my last coffee with the mayor. No, no, it's not my last. It's my next coffee with the mayor on October 3rd, it's a Friday at 9 o'clock at Oasi Cafes, so everyone is invited.
Okay.
So that's it, and we need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, just one note, Mayor, the committee of the whole meeting is tomorrow, and the agenda will be the results of the Redevelopment Resources Housing Survey and the Bike and Ped Update from the committee, city staff, and potentially Bike Fitchburg.
Oh, I want to say, I don't know. Can you explain what is the profit for the vacancy or you charge? You know, I don't know. Can you explain that, Tracy?
So the process to fill the vacancy is defined by ordinance. Ultimately, Tracy will post notice in accordance with ordinance. I believe it's three consecutive weeks. The city will take applications for those interested over a certain period of time, and then within set periods of time, a committee of the whole will be necessary for any candidates who are wishing to be considered for the vacancy in order to be interviewed, if you will, by the common council. And then I believe at the following common council meeting, there'll be a vote in order to select one of the candidates or a candidate. We'll share more information in detail, but that's at least a general overview. We'll start looking at some timelines, recognizing that October 1st is the effective date, so that is helpful for us from a planning perspective. So thank you for your service to our community, Alder Vafadari, and if we at City Hall can be of any assistance, don't hesitate to reach out.
Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Buenas noches, good night.